Praise God, our heavenly Father, we thank the Lord for this thing, we thank you for many, many blessings and light. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for doing it for first responders and what I just want to add. All those, the other week when my blood was, if anybody got there, make me use the Lord for that. Heavenly Father, we thank you for first responders. I just started, I suppose, now we're going to be first responders. I'm. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll say, wasn't it? Oh, I didn't hear you. I'll say. I agree all. All right. Prove that. Uh. Hello? Good. Sorry, I have to mention the three delay. Oh, no, it's the player. That's your people. Where is it? Where are you still from? You're good right here. So, sure, everyone can hear me. Very good. Hello, my working podiums. Um, and I appreciate you all, uh, hearing me out today. Um. Main purpose to me coming for you is to request, uh, funding for a third cost. So Mineral County has two prosecutor county for, been as long as I can remember, uh, the elected of myself, my assistant prosecutor. When you have the numbers that we have here in Mineral County, uh, you need more manpower. And our numbers, and so what I did was I went through and went through surrounding counties that all have. Uh, their numbers, Camper County, Hardy County, Ford County, and our number exceeds. Bellmies, we have a fifth leader. I wasn't able to see their juvenile amount as far as musical act and like that some potential. But I can say from this year, when our end, we have filed nineteen unique juvenile musical act neglect petition. Whereas all of twenty twenty-four there was. And when you have these numbers, you're really stretching your prosecutor's. And. What I believe has been happening for quite some time is the prosecutor's trust so thin that things remain neglected and being missing missed. And things seem to fall through cracks. And since I've been here since January, I took office, I've noticed, you know, a few things that have fallen through the cracks that were concerning. And I want to prevent that from happening. These cases need the man. I think one thing that really needs to be mentioned is juveniles. Um, it feels like this county is extremely behind in juvenile, the juvenile justice system as far as delinquency, data defenses, as well as, uh, prosecutorial, like attention towards your musical collect. And that's something I've been working on, basically, since I've been in office, um, attending every meeting, basically, uh, keeping up with department, making sure they're doing what they need to do, trying to reunify family, trying to keep kids from getting to that level of delinquency, like reaching that of criminal behavior. Uh, giving parents aid when they, when I can, you know, sometimes you need court involvement to get kids help. And doing what I can to make that available for all. Um. Well, we had a multi-series of serious, uh, problems, felonies. We've, we've had three homicides in the past eight months. Which, from my, moving back in previous years, that's not the norm here, but the case we're gonna have to. And to do that, we need the man. And something that I, I think would probably just fuel, I know, as I've been here, we talked a bit about the jail bill and the cost of incarceration. And that's another thing that seems to kind of fall through your cracks, uh, when you're stretched really thin. Uh, and what I did was, and these are three active cases, so I can't really give much detail. But I went through three cases where, and just so everyone kind of knows how the jail bill works, some people of course know, but when someone has been pre-trimmed or sad before they've been adjudicated, before they've been convicted, the jail bill is going, is going to county dial, county baseball. Once they've been convicted, the state picks it. But for three people, and these aren't, these aren't situations where you're waiting for evidence to come in, these are situations where, once they're indicted, they could have been tried within five, six months. But what if? If the. Just all. Third one. So. Those three people by themselves, just their jail, jail bill by themselves, exceeds forty-three thousand dollars. So if you have, we had one meeting. That. Should be tried. Should be punished. They'll be, they'll be being tried, and they're sitting there waiting trial. And I, I know this isn't the first time we've had prosecutors look at. Paul, I need that in, like, long term candidates, say that Morgan County. They. That'll. You take those out of there. Thanks for that. Patient. Fill that in. We'll be here about, and get rid of them, kind of. Cause look at. My attention. But. That. Hey. Plan or. I get. And we already. Name it. It's really happened. This has been in the past years, I think that. Or as far as they starting Saturday, someone not completing super so. Kind of possible. Can't help it. I'm looking at that. It's very, so important. And they get to do a capacity affidavit, or whether they can afford their first. And. I don't want to make up a statistic, but the vast majority of vendors that we see are, yeah, exactly. So, and then even if you were found to be able to afford it, then you don't pay, then come back for the court and say, hey, I can't afford it now. And so it just becomes a big hassle. Um, you're probably not, yeah, for it in because you're not gonna get it. Can you, um, either email us or tell us the numbers? Number ten fifteen. So, if I can email to you, I can give you a quick rundown, right here. Okay, so right now, it's just this year alone, I'm just going by, I'm going by my best, just by my indictment. So my grand jury, I said my main grand jury was cut short even though. Even with it being cut short, and presenting my case, we're forty-four felonies indicted. Uh, and they have in their budgets four or three prosecutors, and they are, finished their green jury, they're at forty felonies indicted. Hardy County has not had their green per se grand jury scheduled up, but they've only, they've only indicted twelve cases. There. Currently have two. But I think it's more of a, they can't find them. I think that's the other issue that comes into it is, uh, whether or not we're able to find them. Cause that, that was the issue, Hampshire's always been a third, they've been running on two just because can't find anything. That's be my problem. Do you? Yes. Uh. Yes, he is right. This is, this is fighting, one, they're not here to make orders. Fine. And it's. If you. But they said, that'll be my problem once I get financials and. Uh, that Morgan County, they're, they have both their grand jury, they're thirty. Or something. I'm like. They're three. Uh, Morgan three. Up there. They're. Need to. Have. What's next? Basically put, start refrigerator and off that, transition that. Transition back. Yeah. I think being able to get in place where the kind of problems more than county. You know, there, they put that in front of the opioid settlement commission, and that was a, bound to be a battle of musical. But doing something like that, where it wouldn't be just a big chunk at once, it would be gradual. But I appreciate your time. So the best plan, and I guess I could put a fourth out, if, if I were to be successful and we get a third prosecutor, I. There are some people that I know are interested that have graduated law for recent. Um, they would be able to be hired on a full-time basis until they pass the bar. But an idea that I like would be, once the bar is, it's in July, once that July, uh, they pass it, they take the bar while waiting their results. Where. Go them, the ropes, they can follow me running towards, and you're starting to getting some practice, and. Time to be. Uh, so you guard, but the actual. Secure sound will be kicking.
Three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred, three hundred and twenty-three dollars for a check for the public service wireless. For January, February, and March. Yeah. I reckon you'll take care of that.
It's already.
Uh, I figured. Any, any other questions?
Yeah, the receipt that's there.
No. Time. Okay, then we'll move down to the West Virginia Secretary of State update on public service information. Uh. I was thinking something to us about that too, we get a bit recalled. There's two we do.
I don't know why we do two, maintain, I just need to, I mean, to take care of it, it's already gone, it's a recurring one, it's a, we saw it too. But we get to. Well, water fires like on that. So that would justify it. So I don't.
Survey here, we've got some human counties, so. Okay. Uh, and also we have, uh. What's this? Oh, okay, that's good, it's late. Actually, okay, well, let me add something in there real quick, I guess, okay, so. On the agenda, you want a free day. That's from my wife, the thank you. Oh, okay, this is from Detective wife, who's one of your mother. Yeah. Wife's mom, yeah, I love her, pastor, she's saying, she's been a beautiful fan, and all your kind words, and thirst, and you greatly appreciate everything you say. Anyway, definitely much. I definitely appreciate the thoughts and prayers. The, 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 what is land, I guess, Cassandra picked it out, one of these old, what is plant that she picked with the peace lily? There's actually a lot of plant, and I took it home, and things almost doubled inside, it had one big white flower on top of it, now it has about five. So, I was picking on my wife about not being able to keep plants alive, this, I fired my face. Okay, so we're moving on down now to old business, uh, board appointments, we don't have any, correct? Updated on courthouse, ain't it?
Um. They've got, they're ceiling tiles, I'm just through probation, you guys know that Krista has moved. They went down and got her break room cabinets today, well, they didn't get them, they went and purchased them today with her, um. No, I have. Uh, hot water is here. The Black Forest project. What I have. So, I, I'm officially spoken to about that, but that is the workup of the Black Forest project, you all want to look at that. It'll require official approval. It'll be inside the lobby of the, well, where I want it, inside the courthouse.
You know, level.
There's specs for it, it's hard to resolve, but I don't know it at all, I mean, it's pretty substantial in size. But if you all are okay with that, I do need to let Tom know, secondly, order charge for dedication. And apparently we did schedule the dedication for September nineteenth, I had him at my chunder, but I completely forgot about it. So. They're making more. Mission closely done, it has floors, paint, carpet, ceilings, um, the spray floors are taking a while, but they're, um, they're working their way through. You guys haven't been down, you'd be surprised. Progressed. Yeah. You guys want to officially put it back?
I'm good, most of your friends are here. Somebody.
I second.
No, I proved that also.
And I also sent you all the updated construction schedule, I just sent that to you now, there's a whole bottle of it, they are still planning to be finished by the end of July. So, that's, um. Not all that far away.
Time everybody gets everything a little bit shifted, it'll be time.
Yeah, we should be, going into September, and then I need to get with, um, Jeremy to see what little boss to tear down, that blue house, we can go ahead and have it. Have the Brexit ready. I think it's all well and well.
That's okay, one last question.
We don't have any technical battery now.
We need to come along. We need to do that, eventually along.
So.
They're working on it, that's all you can say, right?
I haven't been out, but, um, they're definitely working. Um, now, here. So. There's a chair. Oh, and there's one.
Thanks. Yeah, they're down. All right, uh, updated, I don't have anything at this moment. War Memorial, we had a meeting this evening with, uh. Before this meeting, Wood Hardy came, and we picked a place that was better. And I would make a motion that we look at putting the War Memorial on inside.
Front lawn. A second, I.
And I feel that also, okay.
Anybody got any?
We need to make that motion to move the, um. The whole, the long for that memorial over to the old War Memorial, right? Now, I don't know if they were gonna move that or not.
Cause yeah, they were, they were the first of them, the other was War Memorial. No, we do have to send it with eight one one, make something they all have, or same one. There, so.
Good, great. Okay. All right, sheriff's time for us to spend some more money. Where do you go? Uh, he's on the phone, well, we'll go to them, we'll go to the next one, we're gonna get him. Well, this is. So, the next two or three is for the sheriff.
I already wanted to see if Barbie wants to go ahead and go.
Barbie, I thought I was going to say, where's Barbie? Yeah, we're, it won't take long.
No, it won't take long. I'm with West Virginia Peace Festival, unfortunately, I know we have our festival audits for section third at the Mineral County Fairgrounds. We've, uh, done more in advertising, so we're expecting the radio station is really getting a lot of good avenues for us to bring in more people. And they told us to expect fifteen to thirty thousand people.
How many?
Fifteen thirty. Yeah. So, anyhow, um, we are asking for four thousand dollars for its vessel. Um, the things that, our expenses are up there with the, we've put billboards out. We have a billboard that's posted Bedford, Pennsylvania, we have a billboard in Martinsburg, and a billboard and Cumberland by the fairgrounds. We also advertise with the fairgrounds as a sponsor, and they get a flyer with all our, everybody in the paper that gets the, Cumberland paper gets a flyer with all our information in it, plus our information goes on place mats and restaurants, and they make announcements during their, their fair. Um. We have extra things happening this year, we're now adding changing stations for children. Our Kids Zone is gonna have water slides and a bubble zone for them to go run and play in bubbles. We are, we're looking for a sponsor to bring in Optima Prime, which is a transformer truck, and if he comes, he'll be here for two days. And Trooper Five is coming on Saturday. We're having a truck show on Sunday, and the truck show is with, uh, Convoy for Kids, and they raise funds for children with, you know, cancer or medical needs, they actually help a child get a heart transplant one time. We have all these things coming on, uh, we have concerts now, and then it's enclosed, we can charge for them to come in. Hopefully that'll cover all our fees for bands, if that's seven thousand or more. And the concerts run from six to eleven, so we're thankful these gentlemen's help.
There's some trouble.
But anyhow.
Did the house electric, that upgrade on that record project? Everyone's been there?
That's coming along, I'm still waiting for the funds to come in from a couple of the delegates and the senators. The, the Capitol hasn't released them yet, but once they're released, that will cover that. So all our food vendors will eat electric instead of gen, noisy, smoky generators, and that'd be much safer for everybody. I have a bunch of flyers here, if anybody wants to put them out and location search.
Um, I, I would rather wait, cause I swear the budget is very far. That's mine, I don't, it's definitely gonna come in, I would rather wait for it. We want to wait a little bit, look at the time. Thank you, Barbie.
Thank you, Barbie.
Okay. Sir, you got it forward, first one is estimate on the shadow, which you've got in the. If it's not too hot.
Don't tell them, somebody's smoking, telling them.
Nobody's smoking.
He and he have sent things back a few times.
No show. It's really important.
It's really important.
All right, we'll move down to the resource office. Now, from my understanding, you guys wanna talk about this in the executive session, am I correct?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to go in the executive session.
Okay, this way.
He pardons. That's the max three months. So, now you're following our list. So, I mean, actually, maybe. So, it's not so much that. They will turn the fossil, right?
Yeah.
They have to worry about paying the meter right now, do they do that?
That damn, that's not even, that damn. Right, I saw that. Yes, now we got that through, I mean, I started. In far. Hey, I need to get up as a new guy's too, I wasn't before asking, I signed the castle. Acceptance. Now, now, a good process of legislation. Right. Oh, yeah.
So, anything, that's what I mean, probably I'd go for the. All right. Something will, something will come down. So, we're sending, that's.
And unfortunately, you know, he's a good salesman, and I saw all these. I was somewhat excited, yes, I would have bought shares if it was you being. Um, that was very, that was very, needed, needed to speak, I talked to speaker, probably an hour ago. We make ups.
And.
The network.
So.
So.
I'm eating my dinner.
I didn't eat something and I was like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just like kiss the window or something.
Okay, I'm sweating.
Oh, she has sex acts and.
I think they go all in.
What's that?
No, no action, no action mistaken, no. Call the meeting back to order here, no action mistaken.
Put back one on the next agenda then.
No, well, we weren't going to take an action there. We weren't taking action now. No action mistaken in there, but we. Kind of got to interrupt the heart please. I will make a motion that we approve the resource, school resource officers to be civil service deputies. I second that. June one. That's a new name. No, I missed it. Sorry. We denied it and I approved that all. I believe that's. Okay, update on the vehicle itself. Oh, yeah. About that, yeah. Uh. You're up. We all.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. Thanks for having me and I appreciate you guys not being in our camp. So that was awesome. No, no, we're good. This is good and I appreciate these guys with prior work experience as well. So. Awesome. So my name is Dawn Fuller and I have been with mental county's assessors office since July. And I will apologize ahead of time because I was not able to find the minutes and as I look through the agenda on here, it talks about something that I may be being repetitive about. So I apologize. I just didn't know where to find those minutes. Um, but anyway, so I've been with the office for about 10 months. I absolutely love it. It's great environment. And was offered to go to the West Virginia Tax Commissioners in-service training in Ogilvy, Ogilvy Resort, excuse me, in Wheeling last week. And I was, it was awesome. I learned a lot. I was able to network a lot, which in that role, I feel like is really important how other counties do things and such. But the week before that, I received a check for a hundred and twenty-five dollars, realized that that was a premium for my meal, five dollars, twenty-five dollars a day. For the two thousand thirteen February handbook. And then it was updated with a replacement in March of two thousand and fourteen that basically states, and I'm just going to paraphrase, I have the handbook if someone wants to look at that, but paraphrase. You're going to a conference out of town and overnight without any meals, you were allotted forty dollars a day for all your meals. If you're going to a conference out of town overnight and they're providing some meals, you're allocated twenty-five dollars a day. All joking aside, I look like this for a reason because I like to eat. But let's be real, twenty-five dollars a day is not acceptable. So I did some research and found the U.S. General Service Administration. It is the United States government-approved website where you can go anywhere in the country, any state, any county, any city, and find out what your premium is. That said, I was in Wheeling and I'm from Pizer. So I put in two six seven two six. And that reveal per day is sixty-eight dollars versus my twenty-five. I didn't want, but I did look at Wheeling, Lake Trent, Canadian, and Blackwoods because I know those are some of the high points within the state. That I know law enforcement goes, um, you got, I mean, just legal, I know some of the other associations go to some of those areas. So those were the high points that I picked. And I printed those as well if you guys wanted to see those. Sixty-eight dollars a day. Okay, so I have the floor. Am I correct? I'd like to finish this because I was, I was approached at three o'clock this afternoon if I wanted to come off the agenda and I said no. Because I did not know where the minutes were to know that there was something that was in that one. So as an employee taxpayer, I think you guys and I, maybe I'm being repetitive and that's why I apologized. But we need to be aware for not just the assessors office, but nine-one-one commissioners, county clerk, sheriff, whoever else is handling the party, they need to be aware. County employees need, it's embarrassing. We were fortunate enough that a group of us went together and purchased some lunches, some items. So that we did not have to stretch out our hundred for structure, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for nine meals we were responsible for. The math is just under fourteen dollars.
Now, in all honesty, Joe can verify this. I've been listening to this for two weeks now because Chris was saying, he said four. He said forty dollars for a meal and it wasn't fancy meal at all.
So.
Been listening to it. It needs to work.
So like I said, I was not aware that it was anywhere in any minutes. So.
What?
Okay, yes.
That's been worked for two years and that's what the wage now review board was just. Stop hitting the duck and that's what I keep saying. I send people for training all the time, brand new people who are switching jobs, skipping paychecks. And they can't even afford to eat and we just keep.
Ways before it sounded good and then are we only going to do the amount of pay when they come back and will no longer do the pay upfront? So then that was an issue. Are the employees going to be able to wait until they come back for it? So that's kind of where we were looking into that and kind of went in. Like I said.
Well, and as I was saying, not every department is probably fortunate enough to be as family oriented as what I, what I am in. So in respect to all of it all, and I'm often speaking for myself and I'm taking it all myself to speak for everybody and I think I may upset people with that. But we need to make sure that we are not putting a financial burden on us, on new employees, current employees. To go to in-service, which will in turn increase our retainability within the county, which is not ready. I hate to say that, but it's not, but if you have retention, then we can have in-services that will keep us up and compliant within every department within the state, in our county. So at this, I just would like the commissioners to consider that, to add a replacement to the handbook or however it needs to be done. Most things in the handbook are from two thousand and thirteen and there's I think three, two amendments and a replacement from two thousand and fourteen. Just to put it in perspective, it took, I could have a five dollar reimbursement for it.
So well, can't do it this week, but we'll try and get together next week then because it's not, the travel policy isn't the only thing we're looking at. It's our main thing that needs to be done. But the question was, are we not going to pay prepaid employees before they go? And the way it is.
Thing of it is, they shouldn't pay something because a lot of them may not have the money to buy.
That's the question.
Well, and the way it's written now, like I said, I have it. If you are, um, I don't remember the exact verbiage, so I apologize, but it is here. If you are going to have, I think all of it, you had to produce your receipts, but if it was partial, then, and even the U.S. General Service Administration has it broken down. This much for lunch, this much for dinner, this much for breakfast. So even just breaking it down to those nine meals that we had to take care of ourselves was a hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Which is a whole lot better than a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So can you go to Wheeling, West Virginia for five days and eat normal for a hundred and twenty-five dollars? Because I can't. I don't eat out very often. Maybe once a payday period, I'll grab lunch while I'm in the office. I'm the one that packed my lunch. I'm a family of five and don't go out to dinner very often. You, and when you pull up and you Google, what's the national meal average at Olive Garden or Cheddar's or anything along those places? Then you're not even necessarily looking at a resort area such as Wheeling that doesn't have a lot of chain restaurants. It's all Perkins. Um, a Perkins, a Dunkin' Donuts and a Bob Evans. So twenty-one dollars for breakfast at Bob Evans.
Now, you are.
A few do, I do not. This is my first traveling experience. So, um, I don't know. I don't know that.
Upfront thing that the people use.
That was the other issue. Every employee would have to get a P card and have any money upfront and then you have to watch that when you purchase that you don't go over the amount of the cost.
But then I'm still, as a, as an employee, I'm still taking care of the balance on my own. So isn't it easier just to use the guidelines that are set forth by the government? And say for every day for breakfast, you get sixteen dollars. If you have four lunches, which we had three breakfasts, four dinners and two dinners to take care of during those five days. So those would break down to like I said, a hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And if you didn't want to do that full sixty-eight dollars a day, break it down by the agenda. You know, your, our agenda told us lunch was on our end every day. Uh, breakfast was on our, the last day, dinner, the first and last day. If you need to break it down like that, I, I mean, I know it's an accounting process, but you're already cutting the check. So for someone like me, and I'm sure there's more of us in the room that have families and live payday to payday because that is the society we live in, unfortunately. I think you need to look at it and be, and cut the check and then not worry about P cards that are going to be like, oh my gosh, now I owe the county two dollars and seventy-eight minutes. Give me a check for a hundred and sixty-nine dollars and then it's my responsibility to either spend a hundred and sixty-nine dollars or I come back and maybe I put a little cushion in my pocket and I take my kids out for ice cream at Dairy Queen when I get home. For being away and being gone for twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, my delight though, if you got the ice cream, you actually sacrificed.
Correct. And I sacrificed because I'm away twenty-four hours a day, not just my eight hour day.
It wasn't a way you were looking at it during the girl. They did, but then the problem came up of whether we would pay our bill or not.
You know, and then, yeah, this, if the meals are provided, if breakfast and a lunch and a dinner provided and they don't get anything. But if asked, if we started opening more questions and.
Here's the thing, they know good success. If she, and I don't, I have no idea what you were, don't care how much money you go, really don't care, I'm just using this as an example.
Yeah, I worked for the county, I was there ten months. I left the job with twenty-three years of retail. Boy, now, this is great.
But anyway, it's not fair. I mean, it's not fair to send her and, I mean, she didn't have the money to buy her breakfast, lunch, and dinner and expect her to buy it without taking some money with. That's not fair.
And that's, that was our concern and that's why.
We're already doing it that way, right? We're already doing it that way for the, what I've been, what I've been speaking after, Wanda does have a P card, but Wanda's on the check, right? Yeah. But that's what I'm saying. I'm sure there's a clause associated to the P card being sent out to any employee that is, wanna be doing any type of traveling or conferences or in-service trainings away from home. Okay, well, like I said, I apologize that I'm being repetitive, but I thought it's, right now, it's occurred to me and I felt like I'm probably not the only county employee that had this concern. And if I've seen the minutes and known it was there, I'd have waited, but I did not. I don't, when you go online, just you guys know, the agendas are there, but there are no meetings. There are no minutes. So the minutes you guys approved, none of us can see.
I just glad you did bring two questions.
They had my back. They had my back. It, it is, it's embarrassing to think that's what I had, you know, I can, we were fortunate enough, we're a family in that office. We were fortunate enough, like I said, we probably spent forty to fifty dollars each one of us saying, this is what we're gonna bring. So we had snacks, so we had our lunch, we had breakfast the last morning. We did still have to purchase our dinners and purchase um, one lunch or two, which I can't remember right off, but I mean, you still take that out of what we put into our rooms and what we had, it was still, it was just not enough. Just not enough, so. Um, thank you for hearing me.
Either way, we'll just improve it the way it is and it's not gonna work out for every employee, but it works out for the most, I guess that's what we have to do.
How would it not work out for every employee to do it consistently the same?
I'm sorry, say it the way, whether we prepay or don't prepay, whether we charge or don't.
Well, you're, you're doing free, you're doing prepay now, so there, to me, that's the way it should, I'm not asking for that to change.
Sounds like the commission's a hoarder of prepaid, so well, it shouldn't be wrong for somebody.
Is not prepaid. That's the thing. The wording is the policy that we had for Marshall County is don't prepaid.
So are that on this um, replacement from the handbook that's the only reference we have?
Which your elected official has. Um, it just, so like you said, the way you were.
She didn't wanna breach that confidence, to be real honest.
Didn't want those to go?
Well, she, because it wasn't defined, so she understood where I was coming from and she allowed me to speak freely. And I appreciate that. But it's not approved. It's all void if it's not approved policy.
It's incorrect, but the employee representative has it. It's enough for discussion, so.
To whom?
The employee representative, he was talking to the other employees part of the.
Haven't seen Jeff been. Unless he was in one day last week. I haven't seen him in probably two weeks. We're lucky if we see him once a week. So, I have said, I apologize if I'm being repetitive.
Thank you for letting me speak here, because I've been here.
Sorry, sir.
No, you're, well, if the commission's on board with prepaid, couldn't you just simply preword it, allow prepaid and?
That's, kind of change like the policy as it is then.
The thing of it is, I hate to send somebody out there because there is some people come home, they don't have the money.
I don't, I don't, I understand sending a company non-pollute, it doesn't mean that I have to provide.
Can we approve it now or do we have to go through the way?
That'd be gonna undoes the policy that when we actually started reading how the policy.
Could we get some extra P cards?
Every, the department had to decide which employees they want to have.
Well, but what if, say for an example, just you just, for example, Dawn wasn't on that list and she went for training.
That's up to the assessor for employees.
Okay, and so for the turnover that I can speak, and I'm gonna speak out of turn, but for the turnover that's been in the assessor's office, I, I feel confident that is more than likely why Jill has not applied for those P cards, honestly. We have a really good, well-working, ordinary oil machine and she's already asked me to go to another one, so that would be fine. But there again, what if it comes down to the next person in line who, you know, Mr. Clark here, who hasn't been here as well? You still have to have a policy in place to take care of him without a P card, so.
You're going to get that back.
Correct.
All of others. Involve, mirror the government's policy and pay in advance. Yes. Like setting a bad. And if she decides she don't wanna use it all, if you give her the ice cream, it's her side.
Because I'm, I'm in paid for my eight hours a month, it's paid for the other sixteen hours that I'm away from home.
Correct policy that we don't anymore, that's the thing.
Okay, so you guys override wage an hour, does wage an hour override? I don't know, high or green.
The way you're you want is the elected official representative of the county.
Okay.
We bring the recommendation to the commission, a commission member is also a representative on that board. An employee representative, a civil service employee representative, and a non-civil service employee representative is one of them.
The commission makes the final decision. This helps.
I'm the priority.
Thank you for bringing this to their attention.
Do you need to see these? Would you like to see any of you guys wanna see these? You have them. Uh, this one, you can break this down to twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-five. So you can see, and it's all, it's all been the sixty dollars since two thousand and twenty-three for all the different counties and zip codes that I pulled up. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I might point something out. Yeah, um, as someone who traveled a lot for the military, one of the problems with paying in advance is if something happens between when that check is cut and that person travels. If they get sick and they can't go, then you're in the position of having to try to get that money back.
So I didn't, my check, my check was dated one month before I received it, one week before I had it in my hands. I mean, I would like to think that myself and the other ladies and gentlemen in my office, if something happened, because that's the reason I got to go to conferences is because one lady had some family emergencies and she was not able to go. That is how I got to go. So, you know, that's a chance I think we would be taking as a county, but I'd also like to think as a county, we have upstanding employees that would stand by what is right. If I don't go to a training, I'm not gonna keep money that was for meals that I ate at home.
I agree.
But thank you. I see what you're saying, but I think this is a smaller consensus than the military.
Okay. All right, thank you, Bob, for sharing that. Mayor Bob. Okay, Val. What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry, things are running kind of behind. I apologize for that. All right, rundown property in county municipalities and municipalities. Who has that?
Well, that too. Bob, um, you had to drop off the last commission meeting. You had requested that this item regarding rundown properties in county municipalities. So, I don't know, have you had a chance to talk to him since then?
Talked to him.
Bob.
I've not spoken to Mayor Bob.
Okay. So that's why that item would be the agenda is, you had requested it.
I, I did reach out to RKK, but the director's on a vacation. He comes back tomorrow, so I'm just waiting to hear back from him. So you don't have nothing on that? I don't have any updates.
I'm sorry, I skipped over Joel again. Joel, we hit with the show.
Thanks, Billy. Um, one more was added to that. However, we weren't able to get the one that sustained water damage repaired and back. Uh, there is a bill, but um, I was asked about possibly trading one of the less functional vehicles up there for the services that were rented to give it back up and running.
I don't, I don't think we completely do that. Because that is county property and it should be up for bid to.
And, and the insurance should cover the repair work. That's been, in terms of they didn't have an issue covering the car, right? The trailer was an issue, but the car is not an issue.
I don't think the trailer's really issue, we're just like, for a, um, I don't know how much the trailer's gonna be.
Yeah, because the insurance is trying to cover the repairs on his charger.
I'll get that bill later for the repairs for you guys.
Do you want to? Yeah, we submitted a claim and they said that wouldn't be, the car wouldn't be an issue.
We did have one more we need to add to that list.
Okay, I don't, she just got back today, so she. Yeah, she was, she was there last week.
Two thousand.
Yeah, one more added to the list that we currently have.
We sold nine, no, today.
Yeah, I think she's probably gonna go up one day this week. I'll get the pictures and stuff so I can get them listed.
Okay, what do you know about the dog?
Um, I know that Lauren gave it to me today. Cassandra did call and was requesting the form. I'm just our attorney or something, so I'm just, we're just waiting to get back to work tomorrow. See, I think they were sending it to her today though. So I'll just have to check up tomorrow.
So, nothing there.
I don't have anything on that today, but hopefully next meeting I will. We just got back today.
We both, we both decided on the property to run down.
There was nothing to sign up to. Because, all right, I didn't hear that word anything. We wanted to get that.
Bob, anything to add to that though?
Yeah.
Like I said, he was the reason that was on the agenda.
Bob, do you have anything to uh, add to that properties?
Uh, just, we were talking about um, the change in the state law that permitted municipalities to participate with the county. Uh, but there has to be an MOU drafted. Uh, only thought I would have on that would be if you wanna draft the MOU so that it has what, what you would require in it? Or if you're not, not interested in that at all.
I, I'm not uninterested, however, we don't even have a functioning committee at this point. I think if the commission can kind of make some decisions and get a functioning committee together with the right people, I don't, I don't see the MOU as an issue. And that's as a shared service with the cities. And what are your all thoughts?
Yeah, we need, we need to get that building safety committee somehow offerable by getting an engineer onboard and then the, and then we can talk about an MOU with Elgarden or any other municipality.
Have you talked to? What's his name? Okay, they scored. He is on it? Is he, when he come back? You should, you used the word was.
It's, it's a lot of work for a long time.
Oh, I get it too. I didn't know he talked to me.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. If there's nothing else on that, you don't have nothing on the farm sale or further?
No, we're just waiting on that form. We just got it today.
How about the Ruth, Roberta Ruth, wanting to stay here?
I didn't really have a chance to talk to you guys about it. I did talk to Mr. Wine. Um, he, his understanding was that he had settled. He didn't realize the real estate was part of that. Um, he has since met with an attorney and is uh, going to communicate with his nephew, niece and nephew um, to settle up the property. But he'll have to, he's been trying to locate the appraisement or appraisal we already had John. And um, if we can locate it, then I have to have it appraised. So he is, he is handling the estate, he is working on the estate, so. Let's say my, my recommendation is to leave him, but as the executor, if you get him some, a couple of my stuff and the finalizing.
I'll make a motion that we leave Mr. Wong on the estate settlement and deny their request for remuneration. That's second best. All right. Discuss the nine-one-one, sorry, this.
I don't have any new discussion points on that. I've got the same numbers as last week. I didn't reprint them. I can do whatever you all wish for that, but um, I know that Dutch was in the nine-one-one center as they were processing literally hundreds of calls and working.
Looking there again, yeah.
And working over sixteen hours because we couldn't get relief in there and we're literally sending NRP officers over the mountain to get dispatchers there. Um, one of my people's basement was actively flooding as she was sitting there taking calls and there's not a thing she could do about it. Um, there's value in all dogs, but there is definitely a lot of value in that one and um, I hope you all saw all of the value they bring to the table.
Definitely a lot of value there and I do, I do agree with a lot of that. However, you had, if I remember correctly, you had said that you had uh, not necessarily allocated, but you had come up with a figure of ten thousand dollars and then based on performance, gave people certain raises and spread out to ten thousand, right?
Correct.
And honestly, what I looked at was if you took that down to five thousand and allocated, then that would get them closer to what the rest of the courthouse or the rest of the employees got as far as their, their step-ups and that kind of thing. And we'll get them closer in that range. Not taking away anything that they have done and do daily. Um, they are a great asset and but if we can get the, we have spent a lot of money this year and if we can get, find out what our overrun is at the end of the year and figure out where we're at, then I'll be more than happy to sit down and look at raises for everybody.
That's, that's where I'm at. I think we need to wait till July to see where all of the going. To see for the whole county, not just time on that.
So, I, I understand your point. I see where you're coming from. But nine-one-one doesn't operate off the general county budget and we know what nine-one-one's revenues look like with the state projections. So the county's carryover has very little impact on nine-one-one's operation.
But it's still tax dollars is what I'm looking at. And, and in the end, I mean, we are putting, although it is a trading thing to get your old salary in there so that you can get in that retirement package. I would like to see, because you're part nine-one-one and I like part nine-one-one and part county commission, that I would like to see part of your salaries actually come out of nine-one-one's budget.
A quarter of them are.
Well, yeah, so we're putting, we're taking fifty grand out of general counting. At least we have budgeted next year, take fifty grand out of general counting to put into nine-one-one and of course that's however that's working out, but um, I would like to see that if we can, if we get if we can get that to go away, that would help out, help out the general of the county anyway.
So you are at a point where you just wanted to buy five thousand, so tell me. Yes, sir.
This is the first I'm hearing this, so I, I need to think that through too myself, so I don't.
Okay, well, we are getting to a point though, I have to get salaries submitted for July first.
Well, it's right now, my vote is the salaries stay the same at this point, what these guys decide.
It's up to them. Salaries stay the same? That would mean they don't even get, they don't get anything. Nine-one-one employees do not get step-ups.
That's what I was saying. If you took it back, if you took the ten grand they come up with, you took it back to five. Then that would be some, very similar to step up that the rest of the county.
I'm hearing you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not trying to be, I just.
They need to get some.
You know, at the last meeting, you mentioned that the cell phone UHP is gonna go up, she'll see an increase.
Yes.
How many, how many employees does the county, if I'm allowed to speak out of turn, uh, would that five thousand have to be divided into? I mean, you have on your nine-one-one.
For the eligible people this year, it's one, two, it's right, it's one, two, three, four, five, six this year. It's how many that would be divided amongst.
If you do it like a step up, we can understand this, that where these go all of them.
Right, but we did away with all of that several years ago.
No.
I, I know I don't know the history, but why did we do away with all that?
Because nine-one-one is a different entity and they only. Yeah, and so, hey, we moved. And I'm gonna say this the most respectfully possible thing, the tax office took Lily from custodial, right? In two days, she is capable of doing that job. There's some things to learn, but she's capable of doing the job. And nine-one-one, it takes me a minimum of six months to get someone to a point where they can function and be able to stay in the position and operate on themselves. And six months is a, giving someone a lot of, like, that's someone who's moving relatively quickly. Is a, giving someone a lot of, like, that's someone who's moving relatively quickly. Cause it's a hard job. Middle of the night, you're working two people. There's no supervisor, there's no manager. You're making all of the decisions on the things that are happening. And when we have turnover, it's. Extremely expensive, extremely hard to replace, and it burns everybody else out because. Everyone has to cover those shifts. If I, if one of my team, if facilities calls off today, if someone, if somebody calls off today. We just don't clean the buildings today. If one of my dispatchers call off, it's the same as when a deputy calls out. Someone has to be there. But nine one one doesn't even have any cushion. Like, it's, it's not optional. If someone calls off or someone quits. That position one hundred and ten percent has to be filled all the time, but that means it's me sitting in the seat. And because we already staffed at the lowest level possible for our call.
Okay, if you don't mind me speaking out of turn, I'm glad Lily could learn her job in two days in the assessor's office because I do train the people to come in. It takes a full two-year term to get the people trained in the assessor's office. So when someone's there for six months and they quit, I'm starting all over again. When they're there for a year and a half. We're starting all over again. So I'm glad Lily could do it in two days, but in the assessor's office.
Lily was comfortable at the computer and able to function with the assistant.
Oh, good. Cause I'm sitting here thinking.
No one knows every aspect of any job in two days.
How many salary people do you have on your number? Cause I've heard you say manager and supervisor. So is it just two salary people that you have with nine one one that can work as dispatchers then?
I don't quite understand.
Well, cause you're looking, I'm assuming you're looking at wages for hourly associates. So you've said overnight, no supervisor, no manager. Is that like you who's a salary? Everyone, but you're hourly then?
I'm salary ninety percent of the time.
So are you the only one that's salary then? Is that how that works?
Technically, everyone in the county is out.
But I'm saying they wouldn't have to pay overtime to have this call off. Your manager and your supervisor then.
We pay overtime to anyone who works on.
Gotcha. Thank you. So it's overtime over forty.
Because they're, they respond to it in the first three times.
Right, based on the policy.
Okay, based on our policy.
Okay.
Uh, again, I'll, uh, so I'll make the motion that we do, that you do five thousand. And distribute out however you had it before.
And I'll second that. It's, it's based off of the, what the, the rest of the county already got.
We only get five hundred, right? Seven hundred versus almost not.
Well, it doesn't.
Well. It's almost not, right?
Nine one one has performance metrics that the raises go by. It's not just evenly distributed.
But it's.
So Q A scores.
Step then is what, it's what am I understanding? This would be up step.
It gets approached to the, to the step that you are about. It probably is a little higher for some, but.
We had the almost nine hundred. Ours is only five. Six, excuse me, yes, I'm sorry, six.
So nine one one. Nine one one's raises are based on Q A scores, number of hours worked, employee evaluations, and discipline. So all of those factors go in and that determines a percentage of whatever amount they allocate and then. So it's their performance that determines their raise. It's not based on your status.
Yes, sir. Honestly, I mean, I, I don't mean to offend anybody in this room today, but if you're going to compare. If you're going to compare a county employee, white nine one one operator or a. They're completely, completely opposite. When things happen in the tax office, it's a matter of one of the girls having to go back and research, figuring the problem. Well, something happens at the nine one one center, what it happens, it's a life or death thing. So you, you can't compare the two. When it comes to salaries. You can't compare them either.
Right. Oh, great. Just like Lily went from maintenance to a desk job and she didn't get any pay difference. So just to put it in perspective, on the other end, sir. Yep. No, I agree. But I'm just saying on the office spectrum of it, that's a, that's a status change for her, but not a financial change for her. So that's kind of the comparison we gotta look at.
And they come in comparing the emergency services then involved towards the side to. A non-stressful, high-level, address position in the county.
Well, I'm not good with it, but I'll, whatever you guys tell me. I'm not gonna pretend like I'm gonna pay, but it's fine.
Okay, then let's move along here a little bit.
Real quick, cause I'm gonna get asked. So I've got five thousand dollars to divide amongst them. And in July or August, whenever you guys see carryover, you're gonna consider additional raises for them, the same as all county employees. And what about um Rachel, the one that we?
Uh, honestly, I haven't even looked at that stuff since we left.
Rachel has finished all of her credentials, you could say.
Yeah, Rachel's finished her master's in emergency management. She's been with us for over two years. Um. She has not just master's in emergency management, but she's also done all of the training for all of our specialized systems, um, AppTech, Endrato. The backend ad, all of those things. Um, I'd like to.
Was that funny or ten thousand?
No, exactly. That was separate. I did not make another note. The increase would take her from thirty three five, five hundred and twenty to forty eight. And this is because her quickly, her classes of the course in American, well, just, not just five, I mean, she finished the master's.
Oh, okay. Oh, I.
I make a motion that we, uh, for the work that Rachel put in for the class of qualifications, that we give her the raise. To match her qualification. Is that it?
That's all I have under that, yes.
Okay, okay, Mayor Bob, about your approval for finance systems for El Parte.
Right, the, the, um, the situation of course has changed from we originally brought it to you. It's now really a pass through from the state. Uh, if that comes forward, I'd turn it over to Rick, see if there's any update on that.
He's closer to the speaker there. I have not heard anything new and I uh. Reminded and tried to reach out to Senators uh Smith and Taylor, even this morning, I've never heard back, but then. Appreciate your article. They're kind of reminding me about that. This, um, I did talk with our folks down in uh. The house side and that funding has gone off. Um, presently it's using your E I N or. Elk Garden, but we can, we can change that and um. Uh, Mayor Bob, appreciate your providing us a copy of the IRS form with the E I N. I don't know why the state doesn't know what it is, but. Moving forward, so that's six thousand, which is the piece that I control. That's moving forward. In general, the house leader funds, a bunch of them are moving at this point in time, which maybe we'll see some of them in the next. Month, month and a half, give or take. Um, I would imagine that um, as the president of the senate, Senator Smith probably can get the. The senate side to move at the same time, but I haven't got a confirmation on that.
Thank you. Our issue paperwork wise is that by June thirteenth, I have to submit our year-end budget revision. And I have already allocated from the last one, the money coming from the state. If that's going to be rerouted, then it also depends on whether or not it's coming before the end of June. So in order to make an accurate um revision, I've got to know by the thirteenth. So that I can either delete that line item, shift it to the county, or what I need to do for the paperwork.
Yeah, I think that's really the commission's decision with regards to whether they want to take the lead and have that money come directly to the county or. Or just leave it as it is.
If it's, if it's not coming before the end of the fiscal year, then it's probably easiest if it just comes directly to us. That way there's.
Mayor Bob, when, when are they gonna pave or when do you wanna need the money?
They have paved it partially and we can cover that. It's gonna be a strain. We're gonna walk into the new fiscal year. Pretty close to bankrupt, but we can handle it. Uh, but the remaining, there's still remaining work to be done. That, uh, a lot of it's gonna depend on the rain, honestly. Uh, if they don't get a couple of good days of dry weather, it could go on till late June.
But we, it's, are we gonna get reimbursed for this?
I anticipated. I had, I've never had a lead of turned down. I've never had one turned down.
And we're getting it from the tree.
Correct. That, that was a verbal from me. You were there over at the Davis Center, Senator Smith and uh. He's been good for his word ever since I've gone.
So they're up for paving it now? Is that what you're saying? Is there, is the weather? So there's the weather?
Right, they, they were supposed to be here, I think, next week. But again, it's always, you know, paving is always gonna have a weather component to it.
I'll make a motion we um. That I'm get, was it eighteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand, right.
Eighteen thousand. And then the state fund, the lead of money will come to the county. Instead of Elk Garden.
Yeah, well, I'll send him off a note in the morning on letterhead and tell him, would you make sure I have your E I N for people? Yeah, I, I remember that.
You need our Oasis vendor ID and our.
Yeah, we can deal with that tomorrow.
Okay, why don't you email it to me right now?
Alright, fine. That, that would be helpful. So I'll give it to uh. Finance office.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. Good question. Hey, Mr. Mayor Bob, how do you want this done? Do we give you direct money or do we pay the papers?
It would be easier if you just gave it to us. That way we've got it. We're not gonna do anything else with it. We're already on the hook for over half.
I try, I just wanted to know.
I'm, I'm personally of the opinion we should pay the vendor directly. It's not that I don't trust Mayor Bob.
Are you, are you okay with that? Do they think it'd just invoice the county?
Uh, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Except again, my January or my June thirteenth deadline.
I understand.
I need to know what's going on so that I can put that in the budget for this year.
Yeah, so that's the other thing. If they just invoice us directly, then you can think I can play the out of your budget. The money won't even touch your old hands.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll be splitting it because we're paying for the other street, but um, yeah, I'm sure we can work that out.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I would, I would need something from you allowing me to do that when I tell the vendor, oh, just build a county. I might, I might not agree.
Are you, are you dealing with Scott or who are you dealing with?
It's Scott.
I'll talk to him.
Alright, great.
And it's gonna be reimbursed by the state. Okay, you good with that? Okay, alright, Mayor Bob, it's good to go.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good one.
You too.
Uh, okay, we're out of the old business, uh, other than the travel policy. It'll be at the next meeting, basically. Val, do you wanna present yours now or? Oh, okay, Val. Alright, no problem. Prove your land, proof of property books.
The ancestor, Jill Cogner, has that, I don't know if you had. You have to probably give a better explanation of it, but Jill was awarded Assessor of the Year. Is that how the title of the West Virginia State Department? So by the State Department itself. Yes, and that's quite an honor to have our assessor approved or. She was awarded. Awarded Assessor of the Year. But, so Assessor Cogner is presenting the real estate and personal property books uh for twenty twenty five. Please go in front of the personal property. Yes, I get a copy, the sheriff gets a copy, and the assessor, all the sheriff's a copy.
So I'll make a motion and we approve that, the landing personal property book. And I'll second that.
I'm sorry.
I was waiting to look at it. Okay, that's an approval.
I approve as well, yeah.
We'll sign them a little later. Let's move on to general county budget revisions.
Yeah, I did not have the time to work with that with the.
Next meeting, right?
The water's kind of, but I still don't know exactly what I'm doing with my bed and I haven't gotten any of the.
So bad news about that. They, our flood insurance deductible is.
It's twenty thousand.
How much?
Is it twenty?
It's definitely twenty or twenty-five. So uh, your, your shed will not be meeting that threshold and the car does not come into that and neither does, we're hoping the trailer doesn't fall into that so we can get it fixed. Um, so unfortunately. It does come to the car, but it's not part of that deductible. It just falls under our vehicle, so it's not by any. So unfortunately, um.
Well, as long as the mold didn't corrode in the insulation, I think we're gonna be okay, but. I had such a sinus infection. I've been going on Tuesday. I was sick the rest of the week and never got back in there.
Yeah, I forgot to call you, but we found out that the adjusters did the, one of the rest of the whole people called us and said that will have fallen there. Flood deductible, it's outside water, we're nowhere near needing it. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I got you. Alright, uh, it's been presented, the justice board decided to join the circuit clerk's office and we'll start work on June sixteenth. We need a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to approve it.
I, I second. Facility first and.
Um, I posted, I didn't get to post it after the last meeting. You were a little busy, um. But I did get it posted last week. We've gotten a handful of resumes. So we'll just, uh, actually that's on my list for my report is to see when you guys wanna do interviews for that. Well, yeah, when you all, um. I was thinking, actually, I was thinking we could just do interviews, um, the next meeting. It's the eleventh. It's a morning meeting. They're studying in the afternoon if you all wanna do that.
That's good, it works.
But I've got my calendar. It's a Wednesday. The next meeting's Wednesday, July.
What time you wanna do that?
Well, the meeting's at eight thirty, but whatever time it happens, like you all think it'll be done. Yeah, I mean, you wanna plan for like twelve thirty? We only have five right now, six, six right now, but by then it'll be around something worse.
Like we did last time, we sort through it and then, then we take the three.
Oh, well, if you guys wanted to do it that way, then certainly.
Where he sorts through, then we just send it to the three people.
If we all wanna do it.
What's the deadline for applications?
Oh, I forgot to put a deadline on it, but uh, the meet, the next meeting is two weeks and a couple of days, so.
And what time you doing interviews?
Well, that's what we're.
I don't know any appointments.
If you want us to pick the top three in the spring three, we can do that, or if you wanna interview, I mean, I always get the resumes and just choose the top ones, but however you all wanna do it.
Pick out the ones you think would be.
Yeah. I'm picking out the ones you think.
I wouldn't worry about sticking with three.
And just plan on interviews at twelve thirty? That fine? I hate to wait too long when the meeting be done earlier, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Work through another lunch is what you're saying. Work through another lunch is what you're saying.
Yeah.
All right, what about the convention years and it's? Uh, I have not discussed that or did anything with it since the last meeting. It's just, it's been two very hectic years. Very, very hectic. Yeah, I, and the two and you, two and a half years of being a commissioner, that's the busiest two weeks I've had.
Ooh, okay. So we'll go with the chase car decisions.
All right. Oh, then we're there. This is, uh, all right, um, so I'll go over some notes here of everything that I have worked up or talked with or investigated and sought out, um. So based on what I said last time, that we would, we could go and use one full-time medic and several part-time mags to cover twelve hours a day for five days a week. And that salary and benefit package would cost approximately a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and seven dollars, of which we already pay Valley Medical a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, some odd dollars, dollars. So roughly of eighteen thousand dollar savings or more, just when you just look at the pay of the employees. Uh, there's some other things involved in it and I'll get to that. As far as the car, we can keep the cars at nine one one center and the fenced in area and back, uh, we can do that.
Why? Because there's stuff in that car that's going to have to be kept on the pole. Can I finish?
All right. We can keep the cars at nine one one center and plugged in when they're not running. There is a shed and garage up there that's partially owned by, uh, the ambulance authority, but it may be worked on if we want to keep a car inside of that shed or garage if there's an offering. Uh, we need to check on the insurance. We also need to locate lettering the units. That's probably five hundred to a thousand dollars approximately. Uh, for storage, there is, there is room, according to Luke, for a small office indoor storage area at nine one one to keep the supplies and records in. This room could be secured because of the records and also possible storage of medicine during the extreme hot and cold weather situations. So that when it is freezing or when it is super hot, it could be taken inside. They could be taken inside when the ambulance, or when the chase car. Excuse me, not punning. Um, there is a list of medicines that's needed, no definite on prices. We have the ability to shop around for the best price on the medicines. And in reality, most medicines will be taken off the ambulances when it's needed. So if Chase Car shows up on the scene, the ambulance shows up, the medics usually take the medicine on the ambulance, off of the ambulance if it's available on the ambulance. Um, and then the ambulance gets pretty stocked at hospitals or wherever they do. Um, and there are some squads I've offered to help supply the chase car. Uh, there's also a list of other supplies that are needed. The biggest one is, biggest, it's going to be a heart monitor. Biggest, uh, across the cost is approximately twenty thousand for a refurbished unit to sixty thousand for a new one with all the bells and whistles with a possible lease of twelve thousand a year or a thousand dollars a month. Some squads have offered to help to supply, uh, that's a repeat of my previous point. And, oh, well, yeah, so they have offered to help supply the chase car with other items, you know, bandages and gauzes and needles and that kind of thing too. So anyway, we would, one other expense to look at would be uniforms, whether it be t-shirts and or sweatshirts provided for the employees. Uh, we could have the employee provide their own pants and, um, just they could just to get, uh, khaki type pants or something of that nature. Licenses, there's a D E license good. It's for three years. It has to be signed by a medic. It is eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and that covers three, eight year, or three years. There's a West Virginia Board of Pharmacy license that costs fifty-five dollars a year. We'd have to go through a licenser for the vehicle. Don't know what the cost of this will be if there's a cost at all, but whoever the, uh, the medic would be, the, which I'm calling the full-time medic, I'm calling the chief medic. That's just a word that I put in here. Um, but anyway, that, that employee would have to be hired, uh, to set up the licenser for the vehicle. Uh, some of those things that they need would be a list of policies. And, uh, to they, list of policies and requirements as well to build the application, like an equal opportunity policy, harassment policy. Uh, then there's some like medical management QA guidelines. These things, they, we don't already have those policies. Equal opportunity and harassment, we do. We already have those within the county. And we can incorporate that into these. The, the other ones like medical management QA, I think there's a few more that I didn't put in here, but, uh, we really don't need to recreate the wheel. We can go to other counties or other, other agencies and borrow their policy and, and customize it for what we do, which we do a lot for policies and procedures when we come up with that. As far as things like county budget, would we need to create a line item? This is questions for you, Lauren. Would we, we need, need to create a line item for this? Or is there something already in there that we could, because we're going to have expense payroll expenses and then we're going to get reimbursement from the ambulance authority.
As I say, so the expenses are going to be paid out of the county, not out of the ambulance. Okay, then we would want to set up a separate.
We would have to do our payroll. We would have to do the payroll out of.
If you want to be a county employee, it would come out of the general county payroll, just like the nine one one dispatcher.
We don't need to create another item.
It would probably be best separated if we're going to be buying other supplies as well out.
The ambulance authorities will be able to buy the other supplies and everything. All, all, the only thing that's going to be coming through county would be the payroll.
Okay, that's how I understood it in the last meeting. Yeah, so they are covering the other costs.
That also applies to every vision. If we do something like that.
Yes, but that'll probably not take effect until July.
As far as, so then the next item I have is management. Um, and basically it would fall, uh, the way I see it happening, um, would be falling under the chief medic. Then that chief medic will be responsible for, uh, scheduling, scheduling the other part times. Uh, the reports and the paperwork, the licenser, uh, reporting directly to the county commission and ambulance authority, running the chase car three days a week. Making sure medicine supplies are in stock and not out of date. And also looking at any training or research that, um, that would need to be done for all the medics. And the part-time medics mainly would be just due to reports for the day they run and replacing any medicines and supplies that they use that day. If they can't, then inform the, the chief medic. Um, under this, also want to add that when they talked last time, I talked about the full-time uh, medic being thirty-six hours. And there was a salary, I think it was eighty-three thousand associated. That, that was with all the benefits and everything. Um, Lou made a comment that it was forty hours, that he had gave me the numbers of forty hours. So I would like to, my thought process right here is that if we leave it at forty hours, then the, the extra four hours a week could be used for doing paper roll, paperwork and.
Thirty-six hour.
Uh, thirty-six. This will be thirty-six and then the extra four, yeah, the extra four hours. I'm sorry. I don't know what I said there, but so the extra four hours would be used to do paperwork or if there's open runs, like, um, they get a call if, if they, if the shift ends at eight o'clock and they get a call at seven forty-five and, and it would take them another hour or so on that call, you know, that, that extra for the full-time medic, that extra four hours a week would cover that as well as the paperwork and the other responsibilities of that full-time medic. And then, um, I forget where I was going there. But anyway, we'd have to look into the classes and training for the medic. I'm not sure what is required and how much it would cost. Uh, the maintenance agreement would be the same with the ambulance authority as far as taking care of the chase cars and maintenance, the fuels and other items. Um, I do not see the cost of us running this chase car will cost the county or the ambulance authority any more money than what is currently being paid out to Valley Medical. I also believe that I've seen opportunities for grants and such that could help with training and supplies to run the chase car. I also believe that I have the chase car, I also believe that having a chase car medics as employees of the county and under the direction of the same medical director as the many wonderful volunteer medics we have in this county. It will alleviate some confusion and frustration. When training takes place, it allows for everyone to have the same protocols and procedures and will give the county residents, I feel would have given the county residents a better care on scene. And then the ambulance. So I will stop there for now. I have more to add, but I would like to ask the other two commissioners if they have any questions or discussion.
I like to ask the question, you're paying for the medical insurance for this thing. If there's a mistake made on that ambulance, are we going to be held liable?
That falls under the West Virginia corporate ambulance, uh, insurance that the ambulance authority has.
Yeah, we already have.
I know, but.
We already, we already had a two million dollar. Uh,
So it won't come back on the county?
I mean, they're, they're, they would sue the county, but that's what your insurance policy is for. But, you know.
Did you hear, I don't know if you listened very well to what Lou just said a little bit ago about insurance. And we had some buildings story through this way. Twenty-five thousand dollars deductible. I'm not pressed.
Okay, well, that's building initiative.
Well, I know what it is. Bottom line, insurance, insurance. Right up there is Tony in Westernport. Their fire department got the story. Insurance company won't give them nothing. You can trust the insurance company as long as you want. I don't.
You have to write a policy.
Uh, that policy was there. They refused to pay. Uh, you wanted to say something, Steve. Did you?
No, I'm, I'm just a listener.
Oh, I thought you went to say something. I'm sorry. As far as insurance, the insurance that we actually have now wouldn't cover anything. We went through a situation several years ago in our department and our insurance covered everything.
Yeah, I mean, there's other, VFIS is who the departments, the fire department choose, uh, for medical liability insurance. Um, I can speak for a short gap only, but I believe that every county agency that has EMS in the county has the same policy. We have a million dollar per incident, a million dollar coverage on top of the officers as a balloon and another million dollar balloon coverage over top of that should something happen. There's going to be care involved because it would be a county employee. Just like right now, if it's Valley Medical's employee on a county ambulance, it's transported into the hospital, but everybody, everybody has a piece of the pie right there when that ambulance is going to the hospital. It's not, it's not one or the other. We, we're working together. So, yeah, insurance is, is tricky, you know, but it, it's, that coverage is there and, and a three million dollar umbrella for one incident is, is outrageous and, and coverage. And, and expense wise, not awful, not awful expensive for our vehicle, for our county fire agencies, really for medical liability.
Well, the ambulance authority already has general liability that likely covers medical. We'd have to check it under writer, but your.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying there's, there, there are options out there. I'm not suggesting we go away from, you know, the way we, you know, created the wheel, but, uh,
But the liability insurance on the vehicle, Valley have insurance and we also pay.
Yeah, well, so and with, uh, Dr. Kerbo's contact that we designed, we had to provide a proof of a large coverage of insurance because she was going to be down here and be part of the ambulance authority, which our policy actually already had. We didn't have to increase the coverage. Luke, Luke can verify that. We, we had more insurance than currently required, uh, before she, uh, before we timed it on.
But it's not going to be another expense that we.
No, we're already paying for it.
Yeah, because the vehicle is also already insured. Yes.
Yeah, so we. Yeah, we had, we had to put insurance back on the vehicle because, uh, the current contractor, um, something happened and they wouldn't allow us to even move it. If it was going to be on the scene, it had to be left. Uh, that, that from the county could run it on their insurance. So we had to re-insure it. So it's doubly insured right now. Uh, their insurance aren't insured.
And the ambulance authority currently pays, last, last meeting, Dr. Doug said, one, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Uh, yeah, with the, with the increase that'll happen this year, it'll be about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. I would imagine it's about, boils down to about eleven thousand, five hundred a month, depending on holdovers and, uh, things like that, uh, at the end of the day.
That you said something on the licensing, eight hundred dollars? Eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That is for the DEA. And the fifty-five. NE license and that's good for three years. And then needs, and, and we need to have a medic that orders signed for that licensing. Um, and then, and then there's a, the West Virginia Board of Pharmacy license and that's good for five a year.
Yeah. So what's, what does the first year, how much extra is it going to cost?
To be honest, I don't, I cannot give you a definite dollar amount.
Probably sixty, maybe sixty thousand?
No.
Well, I, I'd say as the president of the ambulance authority, I'm against spending all of that extra money all at once. You would finance it just like we did when Steve financed a quarter million dollars worth of cardiac monitors and CPR machines that we could afford while we were paying the value contract.
But no, wait a minute. We're going to have, you're going to pull up. Is Valley going to have a heart monitor over there?
Yes, yeah.
So you're actually looking at how much there.
So that could be, we could get a refurbished unit for twenty thousand or a brand new one for sixty thousand. If you go the brand new route, then you do, do the lease payments. About a thousand dollars, about twelve thousand dollars.
So we're right back about where we was with the staffing of the, the equipment on the, on the thing. You're looking about about where we was at.
Probably in those areas.
Yeah, we'll get it.
So I think that would be under us, our, us of the county.
That's what worries me. That's what concerned me. Because if we get sued.
For what?
That's what concerns me.
Yeah, everybody can get sued. Joe probably gets sued once a week.
You can get sued under, now it's probably for seeing everybody.
No, everybody don't get sued. But a lot of people get sued. But everybody does not get sued.
There's a lot of people, you say you're worried about.
But that's something, listen, I'm concerned about this because this is part of your money. This is county money. It is. And I've just, I'll tell you what I've thought about and I've done some, I've done some looking into this in the last couple of weeks. It's just come up. I'm afraid, this is what I'm afraid of. If this fails, we might end up just like Hampshire County. Oh, now, now, wait a minute. Wait, no, don't interrupt. Don't interrupt. Just put your hand down and listen for a minute. We could end up just like Hampshire County. And if we do, if we do, then what are we going to do? Because Valley Medical will not take it back.
May I speak on that?
Yes.
So in order to run a paid EMS agency, you need upwards of three point eight million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Regardless, our budget that we are currently working within is what? Two hundred fifty thousand-ish dollars? Even if the levy were to increase, we would not reach one million dollars.
Right.
Therefore, we are not even a quarter of the way to be able to fund an EMS paid agency in this county, right?
I agree.
The tax dollars of the citizens, the citizens in this county arise astronomically and many of them are on a fixed income. It's not feasible and nobody wants that to occur. Nobody, including myself, who's from down here and grown to really love this county to the point that I think I might even move here. That's how much I love it. So I have zero desire for that to occur. And as the county EMS medical director, I don't want that to occur. And just in terms of a financial burden, it's not feasible and I do not think it will occur. So that is my personal opinion on that matter.
So the, the Hampshire County went away from Valley Medical to run their chase car.
Mm-hmm.
Because of money. And then the EMS system and the amateurs and stuff started having trouble because of lack of volunteers. I don't think you can correlate the two. No, I don't think they relate. We had, we have a very good volunteer base in this county and we have had it for some time. Hampshire has struggled even before they did that with the chase car. They struggled with volunteers and so. But I don't think you can correlate Hampshire County going away from Valley Medical with the chase car to now they're struggling with the EMS system. And I'll emphasize and think further on that because I, I don't see the correlation, but I could be wrong.
Well, and when we implemented the chase car, there was a lot of discussion of this chase car is going to cause, is going to cause EMS to fail in the county. And that's the thought was people will become reliant on the chase car and simply stop running. But we jumped that hurdle and moved way past it because the chase car's been here for seven years. Yeah, something like that. Seven years and that volunteerism issue hasn't become an issue. This is literally just changing the name on the side and. Honestly, in the last three years, the volunteerism has gotten stronger as it comes to you and us. You're, you're looking at a lot of places. A lot of, uh, several of the organizations pay, pay an incentive to their own members to run.
That's right.
Uh, take care of the community. Some have hired full-time staff. Uh, some have hired part-time staff. Uh, they're taking it on their own. And when these organizations are doing that, it, it benefits the taxpayer by us getting out and keeping the burden on the taxpayer low by not having to come in here and say, this system is breaking and falling away and nobody's doing anything. It, so once. It, so, once again, I'm the president, I'm sorry, but I'm the chief short gap fire department, and we spend upwards of probably sixty thousand plus a year between a full-time EMS employee that we have that runs as an EMT, that runs ambulance calls to cover our community during the day to help us get out. And uh paper call stipend that we pay people if they choose to request it to come, get on the ambulance and run calls to make sure the community is taken care of. Uh, we usually, uh, you know, I'm going to say we have thirty-five to forty-five calls a month. We may fail on one, two, our average per year. In short gap, one, two per month. Um, Fort Ashby Fire Department has hired full-time employees. They, they have only failed on one or two calls this year. They've done very well. Kaiser EMS runs over two thousand calls a year, and they were really struggling for a long time, and they dug in. And their response rate right now is like ninety-seven percent. Uh, and, and that's, that's at a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty calls a month. New Creek Fire Department, um, ninety-five percent plus response rate. We have a couple of departments that struggle a little bit. You could look at the north end of the county, low call volume, the percent is low. They mainly fail on two or three calls a month, but it shows that they fail on eighteen percent of their calls. You can't help that. You see, when you look at everything that happens in Mineral County, you have to look at volume, and you have to look at uh percentage together. And Luke and I are trying to make things work to cover where problems we're having based off of call volume failure or percentage failure, and, and it really has worked. Uh, and some of that has been relying on Valley Medical, who said they would help us out uh and cover second duty nine-one-one calls with their ambulance service. Um, and not charge the county anything for that. And that, you know, I'm thankful for that, but, you know, there's nothing saying that still wouldn't happen if, in my mind. There's a cost savings here and an opportunity for us to do it on our own. Um, I, I can't see if we're going to provide the same service, how we can go the wrong way because there's going to be the financial environment we live in. Valley can't continue to operate at the same cost either. There's going to be an increase in cost. Probably yearly, they, they really jumped it up, would have been, jumped up twenty percent in the last three years, correct?
Yeah, so I just wanted to add in just a reminder that this is a very symbiotic relationship, the volunteers and the chase car, they both need each other. The chase car is not a transporting unit, therefore it requires a volunteer ambulance to take the patient to the hospital, right? The chase car needs the volunteers in order to function, otherwise it doesn't function at all, right? With that said, people send their students to learn and get their preceptor minutes and their patient encounters to the chase car. Between Lauren Trentor, Chris Green, and Craig Fox, we have produced upwards of more than ten, and I think it's actually fifteen or sixteen county medics who have learned. They've gone to their paramedic school, then they've done their preceptorship with those three individuals running the chase car, and only those three individuals pretty much. And then they come back to our community and therefore also run as volunteers for us. So again, this is very much a cohesive relationship. And one does not function well without the other, right? But the chase car cannot work without the volunteers. We need the volunteers to run the ambulances and come to the calls, which is what they're doing, and it seems that it functioned very well as a team. Um, and that's the whole point that I wanted to bring up is that having this under one umbrella, one team for the whole county allows us to excel and do even more things moving forward as, because we're all being within one unit and not functioning as two, two arms, not attached to the same body.
Yeah, well, I, I went to the New Creek uh fire meeting um. Can't remember what they were, what, last Wednesday, then they're um, they're all for it. I don't know what the um, what the rest of the, if you've heard, well, people since it's been put in uh.
I've got some questions. Um, and, you know, the number one question was, well, it, it, honestly, honestly. The number one question I, or statement I met with was, well, here's the beginning and the end. Here comes paid EMS. This is what we're being told. Somebody's spreading that around. People are sometimes, that's, I don't know if that's a scare tactic. I don't know if that's people who are against what we do in this county. Uh, we're a pretty big team here and a family. And fire, fire EMS and, and Joel said earlier, fire EMS, law enforcement, the dispatch, it, it's stressful, it's quick, and you think when you're deep. And we work together and we, our lives depend on it, whether we're in Short Gap or Fort Ashby or New Creek or wherever, wherever, working together. But it can't happen because the county doesn't have the money for paid EMS. We don't have anywhere close. To protect the citizens the way they're being protected right now, it would cost upwards of four million dollars. We run off of a tax levy system voted on by the taxpayers. Well, that's for, that's for enough to barely, yes, barely get by. Um. We run off of a tax levy system where we ask you to vote to pay us the two hundred and. It went up this year. It was two hundred and fifty-eight. I think it's like two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, something like that. It's ballpark, and I can't say for sure. If we would ask you to increase, and it may come down the road, not because of this, but just because of the fact that ambulances are pushing three quarters of a million dollars now. And when this levy was set up, ambulances were a hundred grand. You know, we may have to come someday and say, hey, can you please help us? But we'll still be the cheapest-run EMS system in the state, and we're doing really good. Like, you guys are getting excellent care. We have brilliant paramedics. We have dedicated people. And you're still getting a discount compared to everywhere around you. That's a ten million dollar system across the river over there. And you've got a three million, two million dollar in Hampshire County that we talk about. Hardy County is having a massive struggle right now. It's, it's everywhere, but, but we are doing it at a discount compared to the rest of the counties, and we're doing it very good.
In terms of your excellence in paramedics and EMTs, I don't have to pretend I know they're the best. I do know they're the best because we went to the pipe seven conference and our EMTs and medics won the whole competition. From Mineral County Volunteer Services, just so you're aware, in front of P S Warren.
I like that. One thing that called me there. Uh, we're not waiting an hour or two hours on ambulance either in that county. There are counties in this state that don't even get a call because there's no telephone signal. And I know different counties, it takes over an hour, hour and forty minutes to see an ambulance on the scene. So, I've been president for years. I've been on since nineteen ninety-seven. And I got thrown off one time because of our newspaper. Ain't ever forgotten. Ain't gonna mention no nation. But I'll tell you one, he tells me, trust me, trust me. I'm gonna trust him. So now you know who was. You look at Tucker County, for example. They've got lucky babies, two ambulances to cover the whole Tucker Ness. Pendleton County, if anybody's ever listened to the scanner and listened to Pendleton County, I've set up work and listened to them because we could pick them up. And they beg people on the scanner that cross the air, beg people to come, please take this call.
You're looking for the five minutes.
Yeah, I, I'm saying. I, I'll tell you one, I'll say one more thing. One more person that you talk to about the forty-five minutes per hour. They've gone to a surf company, J.J. Williams. We'll talk to him about that sometime.
Well, I've already talked to, I know about what's going on in the county.
Um, if you look at a big paid EMS system, Randolph County, a lot of population there, Elkins, West Virginia. They have places where they're paid, they're on call, they're in station, they get a call, they have to drive an ambulance fifty minutes to get to a house. Now, we have a lot of ambulances in service, and we have a, a lot of maintenance that we pay out to help them, the ambulance authority does. But when your ambulances and your companies are only spread out four to six to eight, you know, miles apart for the most part, you get over to Burlington, that's a big area. And Elk Garden is up on the mountain, but just speaking on Elk Garden, a very small company with very few members have scratched, maybe failed on one call, two this year at the most. They're, they're a hundred percent response rate every month, and they're doing fantastic. But point is, if Short Gap fails, Fort Ashby's four miles away. If, you know, if Valley Thorne fails, originally it's two miles away. You know, the other way around. It works all the way around. And you just might see, we'll meet each other, we get along, we work together. We'll meet each other and make a crew from one company to the other. Remember coming from Fort Ashby or Short Gap or New Creek or Kaiser? And we get on trucks and we work together because that's what we do.
All right. Does anybody else have anything they want to say?
Do you have anything yours you want to share?
Yes, I do.
Okay, because I don't speak when you get done.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else you want to share?
I'll say this much, what do you say? The volunteers, they don't care about their area, they care about all of it.
Exactly.
You can't help. And I, I, I'm out working the kitchen, I'm doing anything I can to help them, you know? But that's what they do. Volunteers care about everything. That's a good thing.
There are two ways to go.
Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna move on. I'm gonna finish this up here. Um, at this time. I'm gonna make a motion for us to create a board. This board will look further into my research and determine its validity. As well as determine what is best for the county residents. If it looks viable to them, they will also do the following. Create a job description and duties for the chief medic and part-time medics. Create the policies needed to apply for the licensure, determine training needed and an idea of cost. Once this is completed, they will turn to the next commission meeting to make their report. At that time, it would be my intent to move forward with posting the jobs. And then, and this same board go through the hiring process. I've spoken to the following people who have agreed, agreed to be on this board, and I further move that these people be appointed to this temporary board. Uh, started off with the Mineral County Medical Director, Catherine, Dr. Catherine Kerbos. Um. Dr. Michael Shukas, who is a uh assistant professor of emergency medicine. He is also the EMS medical director for Montagnale EMS, St. Joseph Ambulance Service. Hundred Volunteer Fire Department, Vulcan and Volunteer Fire Department, Point Marion Volunteer Fire Department. And he's EMS physician, faculty of the WVU Division of Pre-Hospital Medicine. The next person, and I picked him, or I, I, I kind of dug deep there because I wanted somebody completely out of the area and, and is familiar with setting up chase cars and would be familiar with all the policies and licensure that we would need. And this man is very informative. I had an opportunity to talk to him a couple of times. He's come to the county. Uh, very intelligent man, and I was very impressed with that, with how he is. Uh, so the next one will be Luke McKenzie, the nine-one-one director and Mineral County Administrator. Uh, Roger Reel is a representative of Mineral County Ambulance Authority and also being ease with the Sheriff's Department. And then for one of us commissioners, because I've already done a lot of this legwork. I'll prefer it not be me. I would like for it to be.
I'd like for it to be Jason. Because I, I don't.
So, Jason, you?
I don't have any.
Okay. Jason, do you want to do it?
Sure.
Okay, so it'll be Jason Whitlock will be the other. So that is the motion that I made to create this board.
Now, before we say anything else, I, I would like to kind of show this down here, and there's a reason for it. I'm not, I'm not a big fan of this yet. I'm not a big fan of this because. Of course, I wasn't a big fan of the chase car. I thought about that a long time before it came up. But I'm not a big fan of this yet. Uh, I'm, I'm really not. But my question is, I've had, my point is, I've had a lot of calls over the last two weeks. Wanting to know just exactly what we're doing. And Liz, I want to say this to you, the way you wrote that, say we thank you for that. Because that really, that's what motivated a lot of people to get a hold of this. And there's, I've talked to, I think, three or four different squads in the county that is not in favor of this. Just to let you know, I'm not getting into names of nobody. But I've had a lot of, a lot of feedback on this, and I think we need to settle down, and let the public, let them force their opinion to us. That's my opinion, because we're here, I'm not here to represent just two or three people's opinion. I'm here to represent people of Mineral County, and I think we need to listen to their, their opinions.
I, I agree, we're here to listen to people's opinion of Mineral County, and I've gotten a lot of phone calls as well and some theories. And was actually very happy to see something like this happen. I'm not saying that it's been an easy. And I'm sitting up here shaking now because I'm nervous. But nonetheless, it's a, it's, it's a big step. I know it's a big step. Uh, I would like to. I'm, I feel like I've done all that I can do at this point, and I feel our next step is with this board. And for other people to get involved and to look into everything that I'm claiming and, and, and what I dug up. And if, um, I, I just feel like it will be, that will be our next step. And of course, that board, depending on how quick they can get together and how quick they can meet, you got people, just like Dr. Michael Shukas, who's. Uh, these, it's gonna be hard to work around his schedule to get him, we talked about that, and he's available by Zoom or whatever. All my meetings are, he's capable of, yeah, so, so that, that would be a really good thing. And the same thing with Dr. Kerbos, her working out WVU, and of course, she comes to the county a good bit right now. Nonetheless, we have the opportunity to, to do it by Zoom, and they can all talk and get together. Um, I even talked to Luke about some of the policies and stuff and, um. Of course, I, I didn't want to throw much on his plate because he already has a lot on his plate, but he was more willing to, he thinks he can find policies and stuff that we would need fairly easy, so barring from other agents, that's, that's why I want to get with this board. And I'm not trying to rush anything, but I just think that's the next step.
And the policies and stuff, sure, the other people are, we can definitely take care of those a little bit.
Every agency just redid their licensure, and they have all of those policies that they just created. We don't need to reinvent wheels. We have policies that all of our agencies utilize. And just to show how serious I am about this county, I changed my WVU medicine contract. I no longer am one hundred percent FTE at Ruby. I'm now fifty percent Patomic Valley, which comes out to sixty hours a month. And I am only fifty-four hours at Ruby, and with my buy down, I am twenty-seven hours there. So I'm three days a month in Morgantown, and I am upwards of six to seven days a month here at Patomic Valley. So that is how serious and dedicated I am to doing this. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So that's just for that. But yes, we have all those policies created. We just have to adjust them.
Uh, so there's a thirty-day, 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 thirty, thirty days. And that was, uh, I thought I had in my notes that everything they asked, they weren't, probably didn't save it after it was written. There's a thirty-day notice to end the contract. I do not want to utilize that yet. Because of this, because I want, like, the board to go through. If the board is good with everything, and then the board comes back with positive feedback and, and has everything ready, then we either let them know at that time, or we give them a date, or, or something of that nature down the road. That's something to be handled down the road. If there is only a thirty-day, according to contractors, then a thirty-day notice.
Now, I, I got one question I'd ask to me, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to share this question. If this doesn't work, do we fall back to the chase car? Because Valley Medical won't take it. I, that's what was asked to me, and that's what I'm asking.
Has Valley Medical threatened not to ever help?
I didn't say that. I did not say that. You're adding words, you're putting words in there that I didn't. I'm asking, I just asked a question, who is going to do it if this fails?
May I ask why you feel it would fail?
Well, because I haven't seen it work yet with you, with everybody.
So it would function pretty much identically to how it does now?
I don't think it's identical like it is now because Valley Medical has been, I'm going to say this. And uh, I don't know what your opinion is, that you, you can have it. I'm not, I'm, I'm not a big fan of this yet. I'm going to tell you that. I'm not, I'm not lying to you. I'm telling you how it is. Whether you like it or not, I don't really care. But here's my thing. Valley Medical has been very, very good to Mineral County. I know what you, I know what they've done to some of the squads and how they've helped them.
I agree.
And what they've done. And my thing is, I'm so, because, see, here, they wouldn't take Hampshire County's chase car back.
Hampshire County chose to break free from Valley Medical. I don't think.
Same identical steps.
Yeah.
Same identical steps, and they wouldn't take them back if something happened.
But something has not happened, and that's not entirely correct.
I know what happened over there. I know what has cost me taxpayers over there. I know what it's coming to because I've done talk to someone. Now, if this fails, and Valley Medical won't help, and we have to put in a paid squad, people?
So we will not have to put in a paid squad, because the chase car's not a squad, ever.
Now, how, how are you making a jump from a, from a chase car to a paid squad?
Well, forget it. Just forget it, and go do what you want to do. Hit it right now. Uh, when you put that in the tape, thank you for putting this with me, Steve, or Eddie, Paul, and I did. When you put that in, all I wanted to do was ask what I was asked. All I wanted to bring it up. I didn't say it, and I was bringing it up. So don't get mad at me for what people's asking. Don't get mad at me for what other people's asking.
Okay, so I'll answer the question in the fact of, in, in a sense of. I am not a hundred percent sure what we would do if it would fail. However, I have ninety-nine point nine percent confidence that it will succeed with the people that are involved. With these people on this board, and it gets set up properly. I have ninety-nine percent confidence that it will succeed.
And the only thing we have to do for it to succeed is literally hire a competent person. Like, it's not, there's not a bunch of inner working parts. If we can get the licensure established and get the capital costs out of the way, like your monitor, from that point forward, as long as you can keep a person, you shouldn't see any failure because there's not a bunch of, like, cogs in the wheel. It's a full-time person and. I mean, I'm not saying it couldn't, but, but.
I just asked the question.
Right, no, no, I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to get into a.
All I'm doing is asking what I was asked.
But if the car, if the car would fail. Our ambulance authorities will not fail. It won't because we have like three volunteers there somewhere. And there's no reason for that change.
We will continue to have volunteers. There will only be volunteers because we can't create a paid system. We don't have the funding. So we don't want to.
My, my, my statement on this for Valley, I got nothing against that. But if we would fail. And Valley would refuse to take us back, what's that saying about Valley? Why are they here? They're not listening. They're not here for the community.
Money every place you go.
If they wouldn't take it back, shame on Valley Medical for what they said they want to do for this. I don't care what hospital you go to. I don't care where you go. It's all about the almighty dollar. Because I, I experienced that at Tumis Valley Hospital the other night.
I'm just saying that it's. If, if they refuse to take you back, what's that going to look like on their?
You, you're right. You got a point there. You got a point. But that's what was asked me. And all I'm doing is asking the question. I know I'm getting condemned for asking them questions, but. They're citizens' questions. All I'm doing is bringing them forth.
I think you should bring them forth and I think that's an excellent point that Valley Medical helps this community astronomically. I work at Potomac Valley and if I didn't have Valley Medical transport, none of my patients would ever be transported to places like Winchester. Or Ruby or any of the following. And I absolutely agree one hundred percent with you regarding that statement. The only thing I disagree on is that this is going to fail. Because I'm going to put a hundred percent of my effort in, just like I do always with everything. And with that said. Currently, at least unless it was changed, this car is already supposed to only be staffed by medics who are active volunteer runners in this county. That's per the contract with Valley and that would be hopefully. If I could propose that on the board, that this car, only people who are active volunteer agency members in this county could apply for this position. And therefore it will only support our volunteerism further and not retract from it in any way, shape or form.
But I want to make this very clear one more time. I did not ask that question for myself. I was asked that question.
Right.
And so. Bringing up people that contacted me, I'm bringing up their concerns.
Yes, it's absolutely an important question. I was just relaying my answer.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So I, uh, would make a motion that we, um, on this board, so I have a motion.
Okay, I second that.
With all that that I read that.
Okay, well, right now at this point, I'm not going to vote just on that. Because I'm going to, it's already, it's already in the agenda. So just, we'll see where it goes.
So the motion passed due to that, that two to one. We'll create this board. And with Dr. Turbo's, Dr. Michael Shukas, Luke McKenzie, Roger Reel and Jason Whitlock.
You don't have anything else? You got Valley, I know that, but I'm talking about.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about. We're about over. Do you want to talk?
I can't, I, I'm sorry, but I. Oh, okay, so you, okay, okay. Oh, yeah, we can stop after the meeting. Okay, uh, you want to give your report, Luke?
Yes, so, um, let's see, the dumpsters. Um, when I put out the press release for those, I said they would be out through today. Uh, so two things, uh, Southern Baptist Disaster Relief who's doing people's muck outs, they are not yet finished. They will need a place to put it there. So we have to have a dumpster for them. However, uh, Southern Baptist Disaster Relief. So I, I think this is my opinion. You all can do what you want. Um. I think simply to control costs, we gave a full seven days for people to. To get their stuff there. I, I think we should go ahead and, and that's what we publicized, that they would be out through today. We had three dumpsters in Kaiser this weekend. And we had the Kaiser one dumped.
Every day. So. Dumped every day. Except for Saturday, Sunday and Monday. And we had three dumpsters and they were, two of them was full and the other one was half full probably.
So I love the opinion that just. We should just go ahead and pull those dumpsters. We've given people seven days to fill those. Um, and to get their stuff out. We won't, we don't have all Memorial Day weekend so people have an opportunity. And then just put one behind the nine one one center or at nine one one center. Uh, so that as Southern Baptist Disaster Relief finishes with people who are unable to do their own work, we can haul that there because we do something here that. But I think as far as the publicly accessible dumpsters, we could go a different way. If you guys want to continue to dump them, we can. But I do think we're just getting closer to a point where like ducks at the day, there were a ton of shrubs and. They're, they're definitely, the longer they're there, they're just going to start getting taken advantage of. I wanted to help people.
I just had one call today and I talked to Luke about it. One more basement in the west end that like everything was destroyed and it will take all the dumpsters, but. But they were going to fill up what was left and then I told them to follow me. But they're also part of the Baptist, um. Restoration or really Southern Baptist Disaster Relief.
Yeah, so we need to provide debris removal for them, but I feel like on the public side, we did give enough time. I don't, maybe you guys don't agree and we should give more time, but that's up to you all.
Way Doug talked with the trash that was in there today that he saw over the weekend, it was basically just. Household trash wasn't flooded, yeah. You, you know, they're left and held it when it flood debris and stuff. Uh, he said a lot of it was household trash. Um, I'm in favor of one of them and we'll have to dump Alamon's and then he's on the thing after that.
Well, Alamon wanted his move anyways. So we'll have to, he, I mean, I'll, I'll reach out to. Someone at the back company reached out to me because they didn't want it there anymore anyways. So it just needs to be dumped and taken somewhere else.
You're in favor of moving up if you want up at the nine one one center?
Is that what you want to do?
Yes, I don't know where else to put it. Because I mean, there's, we don't really have any other place. I don't really want it there. There's not really any room, but.
Right, put it in the grass, I'm right.
Yeah, we're back in the fenced in lot, but it's so full because we got all the.
Is there anything over there next to you we could put it where it could be watched for the camera? I'm just asking. Make it easier for people that was in the flood with.
There were people dumping stuff in the wrong dumpsters the other day while deputies were standing there.
I, I would like to get away from Alamon's dumpster as well because.
And that wasn't the deputy's fault. They did it, no, but it being watched isn't going to change anything. When people feed them that. I don't know where else to, I thought about up at the Route forty-six storage building, but it's really, it's especially with the big trailer coming in and out of there. That's not a good place to come in and out.
Well, you're going to get all kinds of dumping up there.
So I just, we'll just put it in that one center. I don't have another place for it, but.
How long would you want to keep it up there?
We probably need to keep it at least another two to three weeks.
Really?
Other than that, it's just started doing clean out.
We're going to put it behind the fence so when people comes in, somebody can take a look at what they got.
Well, it's going to be Southern Baptist who's doing it. It's actually, if we're not, we're not even, the public won't be allowed to get it, we're just. And, and the reason I want to keep it is because the people who Southern Baptist is helping are the people who weren't capable of doing it themselves. So like, I definitely don't want to leave those people with piles of trash or they couldn't get their basins cleaned out on their own.
And how much more do you think financially for us?
I can't imagine that we'll have more than another three loads out of that, but I don't know for sure. I'd have to, I'd have looked at the muck out list today, but there weren't that many surprisingly that they were doing. Because, so can you have those dumped and have one move?
Uh, I want to take it up to nine one one center. And I'll just give him your number and he can call you, tell you where, you can tell him where to put it. I don't know if Mark will come or the guy's been dumping them or if, uh, somebody else. And I didn't get, I meant to go down today and look for one or two, I actually didn't have time. I was late for getting up here, so. I didn't get to go down and look at one quarter actually, but it went all week and hadn't had anything in it.
Well, and that's what the one in Piedmont, we ended up moving to Kaiser because we checked it every day and it was, it was completely empty. It had like three markings back. It's not trash in it. So I will move this one. Um, so Secretary of State sent out an email about a program. Or. West Virginia Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. I just got to look at it today. It's for energy efficiency retrofits and energy planning. And it will cover installation of insulation, installation of energy efficient lighting, HVAC upgrades, weather sealing. Purchase and installation of energy efficient or energy water efficient appliances and equipment. Retrofit of energy efficient pumps and motors, retrofit of replacement. And replacement of windows and doors. It's for local governments and nonprofits specifically. It has a project cap of thirty-seven thousand and it's due in the middle of August. Um. I need to look to see what, what we could do under that, but I'm sure we could find something. I just, I, I wanted to ask, but I assume you all want me to pursue that.
Oh, yeah, pop water system.
We can look at that. Uh, we can look at that. I figured that's one.
There's a way to take care of the problem and then we don't want to worry about the expense of it.
Well, I was thinking though, um. The one, the furnace and family court is extremely old and probably not. Energy star rated. The courthouse has a couple, has at least one unit that we have replaced that's old. So there's, there's a couple of those things. I was hoping we could maybe get a couple of things. It's a, it's capped at thirty-seven thousand. So it won't go a whole long ways, but it will get a couple of things done. So you guys want me to?
Absolutely.
Uh, let's see.
Don't even ask.
Yeah, well, I like to ask to say you know what I'm working on, um. Yes, well, and I looked at this and it's a super simple application, um. Because when I saw block grant, I'm like, oh, block grants are. Like community development block grants are a huge pain in the butt, like huge pain in the butt, but this wasn't bad. Uh, let's see. Told you guys I posted the facilities job. We have already scheduled that interview. Move that back over here. Uh, Division of Rehab. They weren't able to get us name as people this year, but they do have a girl who's interested in like administrative work. She would only, she could only be paid minimum wage because that's all the program allows. Are you guys okay with us hiring her in here? It won't cost us anything. We'll keep her under the. Um, we'll keep her under the threshold.
But we should go to there yourself.
She'll be here. I think it's only a couple of like twenty hours a week. We've still not finished scanning. Um, there were a lot of time that's there. The Cassandra is working on it daily. We have a little bit of a wall. But we're working on it now. And then the flooding incident, we want to have a hot wash, which it's been a minute, so it's a little more than a hot wash at this point. More of like an after action review, but. I didn't know, do all three of you want to be there or how? Yeah, to just discuss what went well, what didn't go well for the flooding. With all, like, I want to meet with all the departments and see what their opinion of what we did was and kind of talk through everything so we can do better in future. I just didn't know if all three of you want to be there.
If we're all three there, then do we have to post it as a?
Well, set, set a date that we can make, we will. Go with the squad.
Okay, well, there's no way I can coordinate them. I'm just trying to choose a date for them. So like, if I try them.
And you're talking about EMS fire and law enforcement.
And do it before, after, and then some party meeting?
Oh, yeah.
And you have the majority of the squads present.
Could have between fire, yeah, maybe just.
Fire Association. Usually the hour before, right?
Yeah, what comes fire associations?
You think five or five thirty minutes early?
Steve's meetings take like thirty seconds, so.
Where should, where should that be? You want by leadership now?
Yeah, I will. I don't have it in my calendar. Where'd the president go? Well. I don't have it on my calendar, but I know it's, it's gotta be. It's gotta be on the twelve. Well, I'll figure that out.
Yeah, it is for twelve. But I don't have where.
Okay, well, we'll just do it before that though and. That'll make that simple.
Can you zoom in?
Not to those. Possibly. Um, let's see, coping to build treasury. The only thing I had was I know Dutch went over to the salt water heaters machine line and we didn't go back.
No, I didn't go there.
Uh, sheriff left, but I had the false alarm warnings. I don't know what we decided about that.
It was already approved March twenty-third.
So he was just going to start enforcing it?
Yeah, and actually Tommy and Karen did have a copy. I don't, so.
I was supposed to get with them. To show them what they need to do with the fresh. Now, now that's now. Uh, get with sheriff to show all the two cars. Okay, twelve and Wally Ford. Actually, I believe that is all I have for you all. Oh, and we discussed the fifty amp electric. Where did we leave that? We were just going to discuss it again.
It wasn't, nobody, I don't think we did.
I don't think you did either.
I don't think we did either. Well, you're talking about courthouse. And how much more was that supposed to be?
It was nineteen hundred dollars. Which I can't understand. I just put a fifteen amp plug in for my camper this weekend.
The chase is already, the chase is already running, so we don't have to do it like at this very moment, right?
Oh, no, but.
Such chase that they put in there. They put one in there big enough for fifty amp?
Yeah. I think it's two and a half inch line or something.
Oh, okay, it's two and a half inch.
Yeah, I think it's something around there.
Yeah.
That was John up in there.
Yeah, and he's always been the most recent. And I don't know, and of course I know nothing about those boxes. If you all go look at that box, I have no idea how much a breaker costs, but I think, I mean, it's not a standard.
Well, the standard square D thing. Looks like computerized.
Yeah, it's super.
Okay, okay. But I think that's all I have.
That fifteen, is that something we need to do right away? Is that something we can decide on before we?
The chase is there, we can put, after the whole building project's gone, we can run it later.
Okay.
Is it going to affect Cody's thoughts?
No. Okay, I did have one more thing. I'm sorry. Kaiser Fire Department. Sent all of their bank statements and their ledger. For the last year. I'm assuming this was in place of the financial review. Did any of you talk to them about this or know what this is about? But I'll touch base with them then I'll like, well. Ask that, because we don't intend to make any exceptions to the rule that CPA is to review. Okay, I just want to make sure, maybe, maybe they were just sending that out of goodwill and are still going to do the review, but I got that. And I wanted to check with you all to see if anybody had a conversation or something. I didn't, I didn't want to reach out. Okay, I think I'm good now. For real this time.
Twenty-first, um, I went to the Piedmont City Council meeting. Which, when are, when is their? They have a. Thing where they're going to open up the time capsule. I'll find you as we're talking here, but, um, also the twenty-first went to the New Creek. Um, Fire Department meeting. Uh, the twenty-second, we went to the C E O S Community Outreach Service banquet. All three of us were there for that. All three of us were there for May twenty-fifth Frankfurt High School graduation and Kaiser High School graduation. And that's all I have.
You made it a birthday graduation?
Oh, yeah, all three of us were there.
If you're, if you're done, I'll tell you. And then I'll tell you the ones we was all at. I was region eight. At their meeting, PDC meeting and, uh, I was at their. At their meeting, PDC meeting, and I was at their Jeremy Taylor Road meeting. Uh, of course, I was at the meeting for the dumpster approval of the dump for the flooding. Uh, I was at the New Creek State Road Office and met with the governor of Morsing. Dutch was there with that. Uh, I attended the autism training at Sheriff's Department. I was at the block, branch and blood bank. Of all my threats and goals, not quite all my. We was at the Fountain United Brother and Bert C E O S Bankway. And I was at the VOTAC graduation. All three of us was there. And I volunteered a couple of days to place flags in three different cemeteries for the veterans. Before Veterans Day. And uh, Memorial Day, oh, I'm sorry, Memorial Day, one thing. And one night too. I was at the uh, both graduations Kaiser and Frankfurt, and we had a short meeting about the where we're going to put the memorial wall here with Tuck Harding today. That's about it. Ready?
Yep.
Uh, so after our last commission meeting, uh, I spent uh, pretty much the rest of my day and evening up at the nine-one-one center. And huge shout out to the nine-one-one operators. Although I didn't give them the pay raises that Luke wanted to give them, they uh,
No, 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 they said they deserved.
Okay. They, but they did an excellent job and um, for the one woman that she had her kids there and they were very well behaved and it kept to herself and she did her job and her house was getting flooded there while she was, while it was going on and the other two couldn't get out or two of them couldn't get out because their, their reliefs couldn't get in there. Uh, so then keep in mind, they was there, come in at four-thirty in the morning and I think eight or nine o'clock they left. And then was back in the next morning at four-thirty. So uh, that is just a huge shout out to them. I really can't, can't thank them enough, but evidently I can't give them a raise. So I'll just say it before Luke does. Had to listen to Luke the whole day, put the plug in for his nine more air dispatch. So um, and of course, you know, it, it goes out to all the, all the fire departments and EMS personnel and uh, everybody that came out. Doctor Kerbos and Lauren was, you guys was in Mon County or something, wasn't you?
Yeah, that's great. Well, actually we were creating blood program guidelines.
Yeah, so then uh, Dr. Shugus, when I got, meet Dr. Shukas, him and medic Gray Wolf and you two come in to help out. We had three chase bars in the county at one time. Uh, I guess they had short gaps, pre-equal rate and ours.
One thirty-four.
And then.
And then the two oh one and then.
That would be used physician, physician response vehicle, that was. Yeah, so we had that. Well, so that was, although wasn't needed, it was very comforting to know those people was in the county and, and we had that opportunity, so.
We sustained zero injuries during that.
Yes, zero injuries, one, one water rescue and really couldn't uh, couldn't thank them enough for all that. Uh, so moving forward. So then Wednesday, the next day, I spent most of the day up Stony Run Road trying to get department highways up there to clear out Stony Run, Stony Run Creek bed. So the water, we quit running down the road and into people's basements. And then spent the next day there with Thoroughwell. I just met uh, Steve from Soil Conservation. I don't think that's her official name, but that's what I keep calling it. Uh, and they're looking at, and they're working on putting a plan together to go through all, a lot of the streams that filled up and getting them cleaned out because of the flooding and all the dirt washed out, all the dirt and rocks and stuff were washed out. So it'd be Stony Run, all the little streams and stuff that behind Walmart that filled up and over, and over flowed their banks. Uh, there's a, there's a stream that goes out by the corner of St. Cloud and G Street. There's actually a wall that fell in. And he's working with uh, what did I tell you?
N R C S.
N R C S. Does he about the state trying to rebuild that wall and fix that stream for that uh, Mr. Zaffron? And uh, but anyway, that was Thursday the fifteenth. Then we met with the governor. Oh, that was the following week, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was uh.
No, that was.
That was through Texas.
Yeah. Uh, so then the Monday the nineteenth, had the emergency commission meeting here. At uh, a little bit later that day, I went down to Fort Asher fairgrounds. They had a training down at the fairgrounds, there were medics. Just uh, that was an all-day class down there. I just went down to show my face and talk to people.
Heard a couple of those positive reports from that. Which I, that train.
Yes. Yeah, that was a lot of good positive reports and, and uh, put together a good program and um, really I think, I think a lot of the medics learned some good, good work at that, so. Then at five-thirty, it was at the rude dedication for Sheriff Jeremy Taylor. Uh, talked a little bit with Gary Howell there about Fountain Public Service District, and I'll just leave it that, that there. Wednesday, I was at Fountain PSD meeting. Uh, planning commission that was canceled. Went to C E O S Bankway, went to the Kaiser Middle School Derek graduation on Thursday. I was anyone there for that. And VOTAC graduation on Friday. Sunday was Frankfurt and Kaiser's graduation. And that brings me to today, meeting Tuck at the here. Sure, there's many more things that transpired. Any phone calls? My phone gives me an update every week, you know, like how much you use your phone and it was either this Sunday or last Sunday. It said I used my phone three hours and eighteen minutes more than the previous week.
Anything to share? Anybody got any comments, sir?
No, sir. I'm just uh, very impressed of how uh, the mental commission and all your staff and all the other agencies are participating to make Brown County whole again after the disaster and also make it more efficient for the citizens.
For the state, you got anything, Sharon?
Well, thank you for being here.
Okay, nobody else has got none. Uh, we have to go over the uh,
Government exonerations.
Exonerations in your states.
I don't know, I'll double check and choose all the bills.
Yes. Before you leave, just, just, before you guys back your leave, you got anything to ask, any comment? No? I'm going to, you going?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for listening. I appreciate you.
Why are you standing here? If you want to meet. Like three of us are just breakers.
I'm leaving. I'll be gone. Wednesday back.
My question about this too. My first time on the project brought it out to. So don't we have the time and it goes wrong?
Couldn't have been there for the last meeting, couldn't they? They have been there for the last meeting.
So she had that payroll done, she signed it the twenty-third.
Want to shoot for Friday and.
We're not getting them in time, then it's not going to happen. Anybody told them that they're not getting the process, I can get to it. To the previous, to the first meeting so that we can sign off on.
Okay, our last meeting was the thirteenth. Pay period ended the fifteenth.
Not his name. Okay. So I'm talking about, so these are for pay, same period from sixteen to thirty.
Right, right, which um, if you can.
Because that pay period did was the sixteen to the thirtieth. So pay had to be gone through.
Are we really supposed to be signing these every other day? Are we supposed to look through these and authorize them before they're?
No, we all, and that's, that should ask. Authority already has them on.
I thought that's what we talked about before.
I was just going to do that kind of authority. Emergency service already exists.
Because the first, the sixteen to the thirtieth.
We can.
And part of our. And it might be.
Part of my problem is that if we have an issue. For the, I'm here for overtime. If we have an issue, they've already got the check, so there's nothing to stop it. I'm not saying anything wrong with any of these or anything, but I'm just saying if there is.
Responsible, double challenge, they'll sign off with it. And if you all feel that somebody was serving that wrong way of being, we can make an adjustment.
Okay.
We were strictly just.
I just think we need to look at these before we, um, self-punishment. We need to look at these and sign off on them.
And I would say unless you're going to come while we're working on the payroll and go through them as you're paying them. Because the pay, the pay period needs to have the mission angels.
Uh, and it, and it's either that, either come in or they're going to wait.
They're already waiting to pay. Because April like thirteenth, sixteen to the thirtieth, and they need to get paid to make it.
Perfect.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Cause uh, sixteen to the thirtieth, they will get paid on the sixteenth. But she hasn't had payroll done by the tenth. And we need on the eleventh. So as I say, commission meetings and payrolls, we pay fifteenth to the last day of the month, however that was.
But we also, for our people, now that currently. They're already making, that's what I'm saying, they're already paying in order for any of our volunteers being in that vehicle and their counts.
Right.
There's double.
I know, I know, I know. The Sanders, cause then she puts some drill out.
The garage always.
There really is lights in there. You know that garage has lights, like boats.
But it doesn't work. You never notice. We also probably have to give refrigerators put in there too, right? For like.
No, there's never refrigerator there.
I'd, I'd like to see that further. I just, I don't feel comfortable. We're signing off on the channels already.
Temperature control.
Yeah, but it's just, it's for your temperature. Extra great, we weren't using the per logistics in emergencies. We have very few resources. I don't want to do all of them. I was thinking they could try to just here. Yeah, but there's no running water. It's not insulated. Everybody in the bathroom going to start today. We could, I'm sure they would have to let us for all. No, cause there's room up there, but there's no, you'd have to do some retro thing, cause it's not even climate controlled.
No, 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 the uh.
They still use that much of the vehicles. I guess. I'm thinking the adults are already south building.
So the mission wants to look at the time sheet for what we pay.
Or it does. We have done one more day.
Yeah, that, that, these years.
And that's one.
No, I'm sorry.
Honestly, some of it, I totally agree. That's all those generators.
I'll see y'all later. Thank you. Y'all got big shoes. Do a good job, fellow.
We don't do a good job pleasing everybody.
Well, you please everybody. There's all the same. You please everybody, you're not doing the job.
Uh, that's probably true.
So, I mean. Yeah, pleasing everybody is kind of like getting hurt or making mistakes. And we can accomplish that and not do anything. Yeah. Well, you know, I was, I was just talking to him that um, y'all took the autism training. The, the other thing that's out there is uh, Alzheimer's training. For the first responders. Because they say what happens is if somebody has Alzheimer's gets out and law enforcement's looking for them and they come up on them, well, I don't know who's policing those. And so they start trying to give them instructions and next thing you know, they got to put hands on and just go to south after that. They've had somebody that was in custody that passed away. So sadly, that's where it goes. We'll see you later on.
All right.
Well, Luke? Good to you.
Nice to be.
Doing a good job. And uh, I'll get in touch with him about Friday.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, and as soon as, let me know, I'll let them know.
All right. All right, I'm just trying to.
Oh, no, I'm good. Most of them stay.
Oh, okay.
I don't even know which ones stay.
You only brought in about three or four. Yeah, I don't think you brought in that many.
You know, our old commission room was about, I don't know, what do you think, a third of this size?
I don't think it was third.
Yeah, and this room.
It might have been full quite a few times. I don't even know where that goes. I'll figure it out in a second. Don't worry about it. I do.
That means we had, I couldn't imagine having it over there.
Right, I've tried to figure out a better way, cause we have a lot of wasted space like over there, but I don't know a better way to.
Yeah, we've had them over there before. You couldn't get.
Oh yeah, especially when it came to like the cats and stuff.
That's exactly.
I think y'all need bleach training.
Yeah.
Uh, we, I don't know, we don't want anybody up higher than us. They'll be really throwing stuff at us then.
I really wanted to dance in this room and I just, it makes the room impractical for anything else. I really wanted a dais in this room and I just, it, it makes the room in braxable for anything else.
What? Well, this is, this is good right here, Barbara Cam, you didn't have one of these for a while, they just got one.
Like the elevated platform there, like.
Well, I, to me, if people would have set up here, great, they would have stayed here.
See, that's, that's what Grant Cam, it does. They just sit right up front for the chit chat and talk.
Yeah, I mean, it's whatever's comfortable for the people.
Well, good to see y'all.
Same here.
Are you parking out back or are you parking front? I'm over here hoping I don't have a ticket on my.
Now, you know, if there's. We have a parking spot right in the back.
A lot, a lot. Uh-oh, it's gone.
If it's not, it's not, it's, if it was a full city.
It was full.
Thing is, that's cool, I recommend.
Hey, I don't mind parking.
I'm parked out.
Oh, you are?
I had to walk to that big old mud puddle out there.
They give me a fifty dollar a day parking for these. But, but we see, I'm just looking at this place like, what? Fifty dollars a day parking, pretty. Hey, you go ahead and laugh, you go ahead and laugh. I mean, uh, my wife and I went down, up, uh, M C on vacation and, uh, they charge like fifty dollars a day. Yeah, I mean, down in Charleston, M C suite, it's only fifteen.
Yeah.
But D C, fifty dollars a day, oh my gosh, I mean, it's nice.
Well.
But look at what you're doing there, too.
That's pretty, I mean, stuff, I heard it all last week, and that one boy of mine went to uh, Pidgeford, Gatlinburg, he had training down there for law enforcement. I told him, I said, I know, but for some reason, they're not bringing it up, and it was, I reckon it's the board.
Well, we brought it up, but then I said, you, you don't pay ahead, the employees really need the money, so then if we get everybody key cards, um, would be an option. Um.
I don't know if ever, I, I don't know if that's why it's giving everybody a key card.
Yeah, you can, you can deactivate the card and just activate it upon their travel.
Oh, you can do that, that might work.
Yeah.
Cause they, it's just like anything, anything else, they put in the code, you can kill the code. I mean, they get halfway to where they're going, almost like that one part. And the phones ringing all those.
What the heck's going on with cards that, I don't have any money.
The amount, they can have one there. Um, but then that was a thought, to get everybody, and the thought that some employees travel without a key card, there's ways around that because we already have to do it, guys, so.
I don't know. I can understand though, if you go to these things, some people, they just, they may not have money.
Right.
To go and buy.
And, and their job requires them to do that.
I do all, prove everything that you're.
Make a motion, approve, count, pay one.
A second, I approve that also.
I approve the meeting, sorry, I wasn't trying to interrupt you.
Oh, no, I was wanting to. Hey, good to see y'all, see you in Singapore this week. I make a move, sing to the states.
Oh, I.
And second.
I'm on it, I approve that also.
And I make a much return, and more, you want. Look at them real quick, make sure they're all signed.
You need to sign each other, sir.
We are adjourned.